Yeah, yeah. Welcome to the Barnstable School Committee meeting for March 15, 2023. Start off by 1.1, District Vision and Core Values. The Barnstable Public Schools educate the whole child by creating a student-centered school culture that addresses students' physical, social, emotional, and academic needs by creating a safe and healthy learning environment in which students are challenged, supported, and engaged. Core values: In Barnstable Public Schools, we value commitment, collaboration, and community. Commitment: We are dedicated to the continuous learning and growth for all. Collaboration: We work together while keeping the students' needs at the center of all decision-making. Community: We build strong, respectful partnerships that support student success. Now, we're going to move to 1.2, Statement by the Chair. I remind everyone that this meeting is being recorded and will be broadcast on Channel 18. I also remind any member of the public who wishes to make an audio or video recording of the open session of this meeting to first notify me as the chair, and I will then inform the public of the recording as required by the open meeting law. So I'm going to take that after. So we're going to start off 2.0, Highlights on Education. We're going to start off 2.1. I have a dream speeches by Mrs. Duran's class from High West. I'll turn it over to Mrs. Duran. Welcome.
Thank you for bringing this up a little bit. Thank you, Dr. Hearn, and school committee members for making my second-grade class at Hyannis West Elementary a highlight in education. It's going to be worth it I did that. Thank you, Principal Kathy Amato and VP Eric Curry for recognizing the importance of this work at our school. I want to thank the families of my students for their support, all of the encouragement and the love they show their children and grandchildren each and every day. I could not do it without you. Obrigado, muchas gracias. Thank you. My dedication to education takes form in the empowerment of our young ones. With the infusion of confidence and knowledge, they learn that they are somebody and that they can evoke change. As these young orators learn about the power of Dr. King's words, they develop an understanding of the power of their own words and how their young voices matter. The late, great John Reed, teacher, mentor, civil rights activist, cherished community member, told me decades ago when I began this journey, "Teach them how to speak up and advocate for themselves," Kathy, and you will see that I have followed his advice tonight. Thank you, John Reed. Your light is shining here tonight. This year, I am very pleased to introduce Luisa Olivera, aspiring teacher and former student of mine. As a matter of fact, the first dream speeches when Dr. Chikowski was here, Luisa was one of the orators, and now my dream is coming true. And she is completing her internship with this class. She's gone above and beyond to contribute her myriad talents of teaching skills and patience every day. She led the portrait project where students composed powerful portraits of black heroes and shared something that they would take away from that person. So we did more than just like read a book about someone. They actually did a portrait of someone that they admired, and you really get a feel for someone when you study their face. You see their strength, their frailties, the similarities, the differences, and embrace them all. We are creating the moments that spark understanding. This they will remember. And now Luisa has created an introduction to the process. Luisa?
Ten years ago, I was a student in Mr. Duran's second-grade class writing my own speech, and I never thought that one day I would be back, this time hoping a new generation of students write their own speech. I want to thank her for giving me this incredible opportunity to work with these amazing group of kids. I made a video to showcase everything that we went through to make the speeches. Thank you.
I will treat people equally even if I get in good trouble.
I was a hard-working woman who was not afraid to do the right thing. Even though she got arrested, she got people who changed, suffered, lost. She inspired me to be fearless.
Jackie Robinson taught me to never give up and be brave. He was the first baseball player to play in the major league. He played for the Dodgers.
Michelle Obama was the first black first lady in the USA. She is a lawyer and an author. I want to give a speech just like her. People will respect me.
Martin Luther King Jr. taught me that racism is bad. People are all equal. We should bend the same. I will always do the right thing.
Shirley Ann Jackson taught me that black women can do anything. She was the first black woman to earn her doctorate in physics at MIT. She is my role model. I want to be just like her and work for equal rights.
Barack Obama taught me that if you believe in yourself, you can do anything. He became the first black president of the United States. I want to be a calming man like him.
Delilah Life taught me that sometimes you have to risk your own freedom to help others. I want to be a leader like him and speak up for freedom. Someday, I want to be a president just like him.
Ruby Bridges was a proud girl who wanted a good education. She didn't let anybody stop her. She told me to be strong. I am like her.
Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. taught me that racism is bad for people, so I'm going to give a speech to teach about racism.
Rosa Parks helped me to be brave. She stood up for herself and others. She fought for equal rights. I will do that when I say my speech.
Jesse Owens won four gold medals, and he was the fastest runner. I want to win a gold medal like him.
Major Minton was an astronaut. I learned that you can be anything you want to be, have, to work hard, and believe in yourself.
Dr. King was a civil rights leader. He wanted all people to be treated equally. He gave big speeches. I'm going to give speech like him.
Martin Luther King Jr. worked it together with a lot of friends to solve problems about equal rights for all. I am doing that too.
Rosa Parks is very courageous. She taught me to give for myself. She was friend with Dr. King. They help each other. I'm a good friend too.
Dr. King marched for equal rights for all people. I learned that I can be like him and work with people to make things equal and fair.
Michelle Obama taught me to be brave. When people try to crush me down, I stay tall and powerful. What she said, "When they go low, we go high."
If you have integrity and character, you can go a long way. And part of having integrity and character is you have the ability to speak your mind, but also be reasonable about what you think the outcome is. Because you may not get what you want, but you can get something, and you need to work at what the something is.
That project was led by Luisa, and John Reed was my black hero, and he actually mentored me when I first came into the district and gave me some good advice. And so now, listen, listen, as seven and eight-year-olds of Barnstable, of Hyannis West, raise their voices, show our youth that their voices matter.
Stop War Now by Nathan Pereira. My name is Nathan. I'm a brilliant, brave, helpful boy who's going to make a change in the world by stopping war. Stop war now. People should not eliminate humans just because they're greedy for land and oil. People will fight back. That is how war begins. Martin Luther King Jr. said, "Darkness cannot javel darkness. Only light can do that. Hate cannot javel hate. Only light can do that. Stop war now." Leaders of the world, listen to me. I am Nathan Pereira. Use your brains instead of bombs to solve your arguments. Don't you know education is the most powerful weapon which can choose to change the world? Nelson Mandela said that. He was inspired by Dr. King. So am I. I hope you are inspired too. Stop war now.
I am Manu. I'm a lovely, smart, and powerful girl who dreams of making a change. My change is to build homes for all of the homeless people here in Hyannis. I see them in the park. They only have food bags with a little food. Sometimes they have a hungry dog. Martin Luther King Jr. said, "Everyone can be great because everyone can serve." I will put up posters to tell people to help me. Together, we will build homes for all of the homeless people.
Please End Racism by Jane Fawn. I am James. I'm a boy who's the fastest runner, bold, and muffin. I want to end racism. Please end racism. Racism is when people are treated unfairly because their skin is brown or black. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. said, "Courage is the power of the mind to overcome fear. Be bold like me. Don't be scared. Fight racism."
Save People Right Now by Carissa Stern. I am Carissa. I am a loving, quiet, yet powerful girl who likes to help people, just like Dr. King and all his friends. I want to help people get their equal rights. Save people right now. Martin Luther King Jr. fought to change laws so people would be treated equally. I want to continue his work. I am going on a train to Washington, DC, and protest peacefully for equal rights. Save people right now. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. said, "Everybody can be great because greatness is determined by service. You only need a heart full of grace and a soul generated by love." I know what I'm going to do, which are you going to do?
Love is the Key by Deanna E. Noah Alvarez. I am Deanna. I am a joyful, helpful girl who is going to make a change in the world by ending racism. Love is the key. Racism makes people get mad. When people get mad, they get violence. Violence doesn't solve problems. It actually makes it worse. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. said, "Love is the key to all problems of the world. How do I get people to understand me? I'm a kid." Love is the key. I have decided to stick with love. Like Dr. King said, "Hate is too great, a burden to bear. Love is the key. Will you help me? It's really not that hard. Just treat all people the same with respect."
Stop Violence to Stop Racism by Amoy Williams. I am Amoy. I'm a loving, caring girl who's going to make a change in the world. I dream of making a change in the world. It's not smart to treat people's colors differently. Dr. King said, "I decide to stick with love. Hate is too great, a burden to bear. Don't hate people that are different from you. I say, just don't hate. Then people get angry. They need to calm down. You can take belly breathing breath or count backwards from five. Tell you said that all people are the same inside. Then it'd be peacefully for all of us. Stop violence, stop racism."
Stop Racism by Mellyn Hernandez Lemos. I'm Mellyn. I'm a joyful, powerful, cheerful girl who's going to make a change in the world by stopping racism. Stop racism. When I meet somebody, I look in their eyes and smile. Somebody looks at me and smiles too. Racism cannot live when people look each other and trust each other. Stop racism. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. said, "I have a dream that my four little children will one day live in a world where they will not be judged by the color of skin but by the content of their character." This is what you can do when you meet someone new. Look in their eyes, get trust. Racism will not survive.
Kids Need Education by Natalia. I am Natalia. I am a loving, caring, and unsupable girl who hopes every child can get an education. Kids need education. Education helps you learn to be strong like me. I just learn among perfect people who change the world by their actions. I am getting stronger at speaking out loud. Kids need education. Girls and boys need an education so they can learn to speak loudly so people can hear what you have to say. Dr. King said, "When I grow up, I will get big words too." I am a girl. I am strong. I am getting big words too. Kids need education.
Bring Peace Back by Emma Amser. My name is Emma Amser. I am a determined, caring, loving, smart girl who is going to make a change. I want all violence to stop, racism, war, and meanness. I'm sick of all this violence. I want it to end. That's what I want for the world. Bring peace back. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. said, "We still have a choice today, nonviolent coexistence or violent coannihilation. I choose peace. Do you agree? Bring peace back. The only solution to peace is God's kingdom."
Treat People Equally by Beatrice Miranda. I am Beatrice. I am a caring, bold, outspoken girl who will change the world with kindness. Treat people equally. People all over the world are upset because they are not being treated fairly. We need to change that. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. said, "Have courage to stand up for your rights. Treat people equally." One day, I hope that we will celebrate what makes us different. Will you celebrate with me? Treat people equally.
Stop Eliminating People by Esmerlita Rodriguez. I am Esmerlita. I am a smart, fast, powerful boy who's going to change the world by ending war. Stop eliminating people. Stop bombing people. Stop hurting people. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. said, "Retaining violence for violence, multiply violence. Adding deeper darkness to a night already of all the stars. Stop eliminating people. I have a dream that grown-ups will work all their fights without violence. It is possible. All people are good like me. I want a peaceful world so I can learn to be a leader."
End Racism by Paris Lewis. My name is Paris. I'm a caring, loving, bold, outspoken girl. My dream is to end racism. The racism is wrong. Kids who are treated with racism grow up with trouble in their hearts. We try to speak our minds. We try to speak up, and still we are shown the door. How would Martin react? As you can see, I have a lot of work ahead of me. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. said, "If you can't fly, then run. If you can't run, then walk. If you can't walk, then crawl. But whatever you do, you have to keep moving forward. Here's what you can do for me. Hire blacks for great jobs. We are intelligent like Shirley Ann Jackson. She was the first black woman to earn her PhDs in physics at MIT. She won her Battle Against Racism. She gave people a chance, and you'll know how brilliant they are. Let's work together to end racism."
Wow. Excellent job. Fantastic job. Whenever you come to talk in front of people, usually most people stop, like, as you can tell with me, like, you stop mixing up your words and stuff. But unbelievable how excellent you all did. You should be very, very proud of yourselves. I'll turn it over. Anybody else have anything to say? Yeah, Mike, this presentation, you know, Mr. Duran, I've seen it through the years, and, you know, it just continually refreshes and inspires me to see. And it's the students themselves who get up in front of a roomful of people by themselves to stand and deliver, and you did tremendous. But we know that you have a tribe behind you, your families, your support systems that make this possible to do this good work. So, Mr. Duran, we're thrilled to see it this year and looking forward to it continually in the future.
Yeah, that was, all the students, fantastic job. It takes a lot of guts to stand up there and speak your mind. It was amazing. It's not easy. Adults have a lot of difficulty with it if you've ever watched public comment. So fantastic job. Martin Luther King is also one of my heroes. One of my favorite speeches by Martin Luther King was his mountaintop speech. It was the last speech he gave. And if you have time to watch that on YouTube, it's inspiring. I watch it probably a lot, and it just gives me the chills every time I see it, knowing it was the last time he spoke in public. But his message there was pretty clear, and I think we're getting there to the promised land, and it's a wonderful thing to see what's the improvements we've made. But we do have room to improve, so let's keep moving forward. And you guys are, you know, our future leaders, and you're on the right path. So thank you so much.
Congratulations on a great job. It's so obvious how much work you've put into your speeches, and your artwork was beautiful. And what's most impressive is how much you seem to be learning, and that takes a big commitment on your part. So keep working hard. You make Barnstable proud, and you will all make a difference in this world.
One of the things that I find every year, so I have four kids, and they're all older now, but I can tell whose parents are with child because as they're speaking, you can see your lips moving because we all know that we were practicing with them just as much. So we know their speech better than they do or as good as they do. And I could ask every one of you to give me the speech right now, and you could do it. I know it. So thank you for bringing them. Thank you for being part of the educational process, you know. Thank you, Mr. Duran. But also, you know what? It's the teachers, but the family's support, which is just as important. So it's, what do they say, a village to educate children. So thank you for coming out tonight on a Wednesday night at supper time. That just shows to me how much you're invested in your kids' education. So thank you for coming. And excellent job, kids. And everybody, you can all, you can now go have supper, and thank you for coming.
I'll bet Mrs. Barth is back there. I'll bet Mrs. Barth is back there waiting for all of you to join her drama club later.
Yep. So I'm going to give you a few minutes. If you want to leave, you can leave. If you want to stay, you can stay. It's up to you.
Thank all of you. Thank you very much.
I'm not worried about it. Okay, I'm going to be starting back up the meeting, so if you could just take conversations out into the hallway, I would just appreciate it. Okay, so I'm going to, I had some, we had somebody coming for public comment, but I wanted to move public comment forward for this, for these folks, just because they have to get somewhere by the time we get to public comment. So So, I'm going to let them come on up and speak for their three minutes now. Come on down. Folks from the theater company, come on down. I'm sorry, that's who it was. Sorry. Yep, that's okay. Come on down, folks from the Mary Poppins.
All right. Hi, thank you so much for having us. My name is Mary Barth. I am the director of the Barnstable High School Drama Club. And we have some special members with us tonight. So, we are getting ready to open our spring musical, which is Mary Poppins. So, tonight I brought with me Mary and Bert. I brought several chimney sweeps. I brought Jane and Michael Banks. And we... Oh, did you pass out to the school committee? Oh, yeah, definitely. We have some QR code links. You can check out our whole cast and crew, our orchestra pit, our creative team that has been putting this together for the past few months. You can read all of our bios. The only bio we don't have on there is Dr. Ahern, who might be making a guest appearance in one of the shows, but we won't tell you anything else. You'll just have to come and see. So, if it's okay, they'd just like to sing a really quick number for you. All right. Do you want them to face you?
One sec. Folks, folks in the back. Folks in the back. If you could just keep it down, just... We can't really hear these folks talking. Thank you.
You let us know where you would like them to stand. Do you want them to face you?
Wherever you would like.
All right, sounds good.
I guess you're... Yes, scooch on in. Yeah, love it. Alex, will you hold your stuffs?
Excellent job. If I could just have somebody... I just got a question. So, can you tell me when your show... You've got to use the microphone over there so people can hear you. Tell us when your shows are, what time they're at, where can people get tickets? Like, this is your chance, so...
So, we have shows at 7:00 PM on Friday. Friday, the 17th, so this Friday.
Yep, this Friday.
And next Friday and Saturday. Oh.
Saturday, too.
Saturday, too? Okay, wait, hold on. 17th, 18th, 24th and 25th at 7:00 PM. And then, and then the 18th and the 25th at 2:00 PM, we have a matinee.
Excellent. Excellent. Thank you very much. Anybody else? Yeah, and how can we... How can folks get tickets?
If you go on the Drama Club website, you can go and buy tickets online.
Okay. Okay, so you can get tickets at the door. And you can go on... So, the Drama Club website, is that on Barnstable High... But for people out in the public, so can they go to Barnstable High School and go to Drama Club?
HTTPS.
They're not going to remember that. They're not going to remember that.
Yep, so what's the... I'm sorry. So, but what's the... So, what's the website actually, though?
If you...
Drama Club.
If you look up online and search up...
It's our show, right? Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
HTTPS.
There you go. Perfect. Excellent. Thank you very much, everybody, for coming. Excellent job. Phenomenal job. Excellent. Excellent. Good luck. Okay. So, now we're going to move on. Now, I'm completely confused myself. So, yep, so I'm going to close the public comment on that. I will be... We will be having public comment later on as scheduled per the agenda. I just... Those folks had to go practice, so I wanted to move it forward for them. So, now we're going to be moving on to 3.1, which is the FY24 budget presentation. Welcome. Whenever you're ready.
Thanks. So, we're pleased to share with you the latest iteration in the FY24 proposed budget. The last time we presented was two weeks ago and the governor's budget had just been released. So, there's been some work happening between now and then to prepare this recommended budget for you this evening. And I want to thank our new deputy director for school finance, Chris Dwelly, who's joining me tonight. In terms of the budget timeline, there had been steps prior to February 15th, including budget development with principals as well as meetings with individual school committee members to understand your priorities for this budget. It all started in October with a joint meeting with the school committee and town council to kind of set the fiscal forecast, with the governor's budget being released in March and some understanding related to the Student Opportunity Act and its implications for Barnstable. I have an update for you and the community about that this evening. Later on tonight will be the public hearing of the school committee's budget. We are scheduled to have you vote on it at the next regular meeting, which is April 5th, after which it gets submitted to the town manager ultimately to be proposed to the town council for their appropriation approval. In terms of major budget drivers, what is driving what would be a level service budget, although we are not proposing a level service budget? Our wages through our collective bargaining agreements, accounting for inflationary pressures on fuel, facilities, maintenance, software licenses and supplies. And then, we're also looking to make sure that we're keeping up with mandated services, particularly in the area of translations and interpretation. As we had noted at previous meetings, there are department requests that came in. We had 96 submissions from 18 cost centers. The total cost of these requests exceeds 4.1 million and was over 47 FTEs. Major submission themes from our principals and directors included supports for English-language learners, including family liaisons and translation services, instructional leadership and paraprofessional support in kindergarten and first grade, although the requests were not limited to those areas. What you'll see tonight are kind of a continuation of what has been previously shared around prioritized budget enhancements, focusing on a few key areas. One being the equitable allocation of resources. So, taking a careful look K-3 and looking across our K-3 elementary schools for equity in terms of paraprofessionals and assistant principal support. District-wide, looking to make sure that we're applying teachers for special education and English language learning in an equitable way aligned to student needs. Part of the entry process identified a need for talent development. And so, we have some proposed enhancements related to recruitment and retention strategies involving professional development and succession planning. Instructional resources, including curriculum supports and leadership, and funding for facilities, planning and space needs. These align with the Entry Plan Findings Report that I shared a few weeks ago and which will shape into longer-term goals for the district. Importantly, the recommended budget that you'll see tonight builds upon the district's plan to fund evidence-based programs to close opportunity and achievement gaps aligned with the Student Opportunity Act. So, the recommended operating budget that is before you and in your packet is ultimately a 7.79% increase, which is just under $6 million, which I know is a large ask, but there is a lot of support for this budget coming from the governor in the form of Chapter 70 and the Student Opportunity Act, based on the revenue and assessments presented in that budget through the Department of Revenue and analyzing that with the town officials related to the 60-40 revenue sharing agreement. There are funds that ought to support this request. Of course, final appropriation, you know, there's a process here for you to support the budget. And of course, final appropriation rests with the town council. The largest area of increase is in salary and wages, and we'll talk through a number of proposed additions to faculty and staff this evening. And we've built in some increases for supplies as well as operating and contracted services. I want to provide a little bit of background because this is a big shift in thinking from the October joint meeting with the town council and the school committee. And so, if the community's been following kind of the story of school funding here in Barnstable, I think it's important to take a step back and understand why we're in the position we're in as a result of the Student Opportunity Act. Chapter 70 funding provides state aid for schools, and it's determined by the Department of Education. They define and calculate a foundation budget, which is determined as what is adequate for each district, given the specific grades, programs and demographic characteristics of its students. Then, DESI determines what an equitable local contribution would be and how much of that foundation budget should be paid for by each city and town's property tax based on its relative wealth. Relative wealth is calculated based on median income in the community as well as property value. The remainder of the foundation budget is then supported by Chapter 70 state aid. The foundation budget was initially set in 1993 as the minimum level necessary to provide an adequate education for all students. There have been two major resets to this funding level. One came in the 2000s. And more recently, with the Student Opportunity Act, they have done a major reset in terms of the foundation budget. It's based on enrollment within your community. That is having a huge... That's a huge factor here in Barnstable in terms of our enrollment changes and our demographic changes. It also takes into account wage, the wages in the region. And so, there's an increment in the formula depending upon where in the state you are. And it takes into account inflation. They do cap inflation. I want to say it's somewhere in the 4.5% range, so it does not reflect the current amount of inflation that we're experiencing, although there's been some significant advocacy for the state to fund at real inflation levels. As I noted, the foundation budget was recently reset across the state through the Student Opportunity Act, based on the recommendations of the Foundation Budget Review Commission. They studied education very deeply in 2015 to determine the cost of educating and noted that there needed to be additional funds and additional support related to economically disadvantaged students, guidance and psychological services that were, as you know, only increasing in schools since the original Ed Reform Act was passed in 93, escalating costs of health insurance and other fixed costs, costs related to students with disabilities and English learners. The preliminary foundation budget per pupil for FY24, according to the governor's budget, is just under 16,000 per student. And the preliminary foundation budget is $84.5 million or an increase of 11.84% from last year. It is a huge increase, and this is not just a one-year increase. This happened last year as well, where there was a large increase to the foundation budget. This does not pertain just to Barnstable Public Schools. This formula does pertain to any public school around which the town of Barnstable is responsible for. So, it also includes kind of a small amount related to charter schools as well as technical tuitions. Required local contribution, the essential question that the state asks, is how much can Barnstable afford to pay towards the foundation budget? Key factors, as I had noted, relates to property wealth in terms of land assessments, and the other is local effort from income. And that combines together to give a municipal revenue growth factor, which factors into what they say the community can support. Historically, Barnstable's target aid from Chapter 70 was 17.5% or the minimum, meaning that the local contribution would make up 82.5% of the budget. That's actually, you know, the maximum amount, and it's largely related to the property values here. But again, the chapter, the Student Opportunity Act has done a major reset, and you'll see in the overall summary that the state is proposing that 29% roughly would be coming from state aid versus the 17.5% previously. So, this is the overall comparison to FY23 of state funding. And I would point to a couple of things on this slide. First is the enrollment, increasing by about 2%. The foundation budget, as I had noted, is increasing nearly $9 million or 11.84%. That's what the state is saying is an adequate amount to fund education here in Barnstable. The required district contribution is going up 5.1% or 2.9 million. Chapter 70 aid is going up $6 million or 32.32%. This is the largest increase for any community in the state. Back in October, when we were operating, we were operating under a much more conservative fiscal model with Chapter 70 expected to go up 500,000. And instead, the Student Opportunity Act is providing significantly more Chapter 70 aid to Barnstable. The enrollment trends are the major pieces that are factoring into our Chapter 70 funding. As noted, it's related to your student enrollment and demographics. And this is a slide that has been shown, I think, for many years, demonstrating the demographic shifts that are being seen in Barnstable.
I don't think it was quite as colorful, though.
We've updated it. The major pieces here that are contributing most significantly to the increased amount in Chapter 70 is a large increase in the number of students who are economically disadvantaged, which happened two years ago. They place districts in 12 tiers. Barnstable is in the 10th tier with 61% of students being identified as economically disadvantaged, which is defined as 185% of the federal poverty level. The other increase is related to the increase in English learners, but I think the largest single factor is related to economically disadvantaged population.
That Chapter 70 is aid for schools from the state generally?
Yeah, the intention is that it is for school funding.
And is that, in the process, the way that we do things here, that... Is that earmarked for schools right now? Or is that something... Will that come directly into the schools?
So, that's part of the 60-40 revenue sharing agreement that's been in place for some time, where all of the revenue gets considered, other assessments get considered, and then kind of in a collection, it's determined 60% of the revenue is available to the school department and 40% to municipal operations.
So, the state... So, okay, so the state reformulated things and says, basically, like, the schools need another $6 million, but based on our state, our funding, we might only get 3.6 instead of the 6.
Yeah, so it gets divided up differently. The state can't compel the town to spend all $6 million on the schools. I will also note that health insurance and fixed costs, there is, you know, kind of an allowance or it is allowable for the town to reserve funding because there are costs that are borne by the municipal department versus the schools. So, some of the money is... It also recognizes those expenses.
Okay. All right, thank you.
So, some may ask if this is a one-time windfall or are we going to rely on this? Chapter 70 through the Student Opportunity Act is a six-year implementation plan, and FY24 is the third year of the six-year implementation plan. Last year, Barnstable also saw a significant increase in Chapter 70 funding coming into the town. The state has been... Has a pretty healthy financial situation and has been funding a stabilization account to be sure that future years of the Student Opportunity Act can be funded. And so the five or so million from last year and the $6 million from FY24 are sustained over time. The foundation budget being increased is also sustained over time. That expectation that education costs more is sustained over time. And we're accountable for the spending of the Chapter 70 monies. Barnstable submitted an initial three-year spending plan to the department in FY21. It was the fall of '20, kind of during the height of COVID. You may or may not remember that moment. It was initially due that spring, and then it was postponed. Annual amendments are submitted each spring. Assistant Superintendent Kristen Harmon and I are currently working on this year's amendment based on FY23 spending, and we are accounting for expenditures towards evidence-based programs to support students and close opportunity and achievement gaps. We will need to submit a new three-year spending plan to the department in FY24, so I anticipate that happening in the fall. There is an expectation, you know, that there's stakeholder involvement and stakeholder engagement and awareness of what the, what the funds are going to support. I will say the initial spending plan that Barnstable submitted was the so-called short form because initially, the Chapter 70 monies that were expected to be received were under $1.5 million incrementally. But because of the rapid and quick shift in the economically disadvantaged population in particular, that moved Barnstable into a new category, and we will be completing the long form of the plan. So for, for the reasons that I have kind of outlined in terms of the intent and the spirit of the law and the reason for the additional monies, I really encourage the school committee to support the recommended budget. We certainly are open to your input on individual lines and some of these requests. But I feel like there's a really compelling case here for the increase of 7.8% to invest as intended with the Student Opportunity Act, the strategic priorities and initiatives focused on closing achievement and opportunity gaps. I'm going to turn it over to Chris to share a little bit of the financials.
Thank you, Sarah. So this graph just shows a seven-year, year-over-year high-level overview of spending toward the school budget. In the far right, you'll see where we land for the projected FY24 budget. So a little under $83 million is coming from the general fund. And we've got two offsets, a little over $2 million from the circuit breaker, and then $600,000 coming from school choice to offset the overall budget. Given the increase in aid that Sarah has just mentioned, we don't anticipate needing any school savings to produce a balanced budget for this year. You saw this slide earlier. It just gives you a year-over-year glimpse between this year's proposed budget and last year's coming in at just under 8%. This is a different view of the proposed budget, broken down by the DESI categories that we are required to track our spending. So one category is by school site, and all the school sites are listed here. You see a three-year history, three years of actual spending, last year's approved budget, and then this year's recommended budget. And this next slide is another view. This is by the major cost categories from administration all the way down to pupil services. Your largest category here is related to instruction. But again, you see the FY23 budgeted amount, or approved amount, I should say, and the proposed FY24 amount.
The next set of slides detail recommendations regarding investment initiatives or enrichments to the budget, which came from cost centers and have been prioritized. There were over $4 million of requests, so this does not reflect everything that was put forward, but does, I think, really support the requests of principals and directors and ultimately really focused on students. You'll see some themes here, but I would like to, for the benefit of the community, go through all of these items in particular because we do have the budget hearing. You have the budget hearing later, later tonight. So a new mandate that is coming from the Department of Education, which not all mandates are bad, I think this is one that's, one worth supporting, is the addition of an English-as-a-second language teacher at our preschool. Previously, that had only been a requirement K through 12, and there is some new language in their guidance documents about providing language-based support in classrooms at the pre-K level. And we are seeing a number of, they call them dual-language learners, which I think is awesome, dual-language learners at the pre-K level. Many of our buildings have requested family and community liaisons, who would be bilingual support. We do have a number of family and community liaisons in the district, but we do not have enough in terms of providing translation and interpretation services in the moment related to family engagement. So there is a halftime liaison proposed for the Early Learning Center. There is a discrepancy across our K- to 3 schools in terms of teaching assistance to support our youngest learners. We're seeing an increased number of students coming in kindergarten and grade one who are not fully ready for school, and providing additional support in the classrooms will only be helpful to our teachers and ultimately to our students. The positions that are proposed in this budget are not at all schools. Again, there's a discrepancy and an inequity. So this aims to kind of level the, the playing field, so to speak, across, across buildings. Not to say that every building's going to have exactly the same. There are demographic differences between the buildings. Some are larger, some are smaller, but that has been taken into account. I would underscore the importance of assistant principals in our buildings. The previous budget was kind of a modest incremental approach to adding assistant principals, K to 3. This recommended budget would propose that each of our K to 3 elementary schools would now have a full-time assistant principal. They are, I think, critical in terms of instructional leadership in support of the principal and in support of every single teacher and every single student in the school. I also think that they can do a lot related to helping teach students appropriate behaviors and can support in so many different ways. So I have requests here related to assistant principals at each of our elementary schools, which currently is in inequity because some have them and some have part-time and some do not have any. Looking, looking ahead, I'm now looking at Centerville. Again, you see a request for teaching assistance to support our learners there and an assistant principal. Centerville has also requested and I support a social worker. This would create more equity across our K to 3 schools. When we look at the counseling and social work staff, there is an inequity there. So this would level that playing field. Hyannis West, support of a family and community liaison, ideally trilingual. West Village's teaching assistants and assistant principal as well. B C I S, looking to support teaching assistants there, restoring the project-based learning coach, which is budget-neutral, but that person would shift from less teaching to also, to also being a coach of teachers. So that would necessitate the addition of a .8 science teacher. The positive here, too, would be more equity across our K to 3 schools in terms of all of the students receiving science instruction more equitably. And an assistant principal there. B U E has requested math interventionists and reading interventionists. Although it's not in the operating budget, we have proposed for it to be grant-funded and would be a preview for something that I think would be supported longer term in the budget. B U E has a number of students, and Assistant Superintendent Harmon will talk a little bit more about STAR data and growth. But they have a number of students who would qualify for intervention, and we do have a need for more, more educators working to, to close skill gaps at grade four, five. They are also looking for a family and community liaison, which we support. And there is a need for a special education, additional paraprofessional at B U E. B I S has requested a family and community liaison, which is something that I recommend. B I S, and you've heard about this in previous presentations, is looking to expand their enrichment offerings and fully schedule students with a nice complement, I think, of enrichments. When I interviewed, one of the questions that the B I S students asked me was what would you think about putting world language in our school? It's something the students are looking for and would better connect the students to the high school where we are offering world language. And I think help me, we don't have our vision of a graduate, but we will, but help our students in our multicultural world. Yep.
Do we have any other languages being taught at any levels until high school? I mean, do we have anything in the elementary schools or anything?
No, it's all eight through 12 right now.
So it doesn't start till grade eight?
Yep.
Okay. That's a shame. Thank you.
I'm a big supporter of elementary languages, and so maybe something worth considering in the future. It's hard to start all at once in terms of staffing, but it could be an incremental, incremental approach. At B I S, they also are looking for a STEM teacher, again, to expand their offerings of enrichment classes. The STEM teacher would align with the high school, again, kind of creating that six, seven, and eight connection from a curriculum standpoint. They have two PBL specialists at B I S. One was grant-funded, and we are going, so we thought we would kind of lose that position. But we have an extension of the grant, so we'll be able to keep that person on staff for another year. We have a number of requests for bilingual paraprofessionals to support students at B I S and B H S. So there are seven positions related to that. They can provide direct support to students in classes. We also anticipate being able to use some of the donation from the kind donor who gave money to support our multilingual learner program to provide any training or education for any pairs who may want to grow into a teacher role, because we do need more ESL teachers as well. We are continuing forward with the peer mediator at the high school, although we propose for that to be grant-funded through ESAR. And I think there's maybe a messed up with the finances here, but we have proposed a multilingual para for English learners in, oh, I'm sorry. It's, it's just a double line. Sorry, in math classes at the high school. We have a lot of newcomers and beginners among our older students. Continuing on with additional recommendations to support students would be a special education teacher in the foundations classes at the high school. We had talked about that, this at the workshop, where we're seeing that program expand. And with five grades of students and a multitude of subjects that they need, we need another teacher in the foundations classroom. Ms. Friedman's top request is to have a department head for the ESL department, which would come in at half, half an FTE. It is the only department at the high school that does not have a department head. And I think, given the demands in the district related to ESL, it is a lot for the coordinator to, to do district-wide. So this is something that is, is needed, and I support. Mentioned the ESL paraprofessionals previously. We have a bilingual counselor at Barnstable High School currently. She's amazing. Ms. Friedman is looking to expand that, given the number of students who are in our high school, who are multilingual learners. This next one is the crossroads teacher. You have previously approved this position, but this formally accounts for it in the budget. We did not end up filling it, but we would like to. I think that it would be able to greatly expand the program offerings and having, the, the model would have, would continue to have ingenuity, but with an additional teacher, provide more direct teaching from that teacher within that program. And then, as was asked at the time that that was approved, we would request, and this is not currently something that you had voted on, an additional paraprofessional for crossroads. B H S is also seeking and requesting and needing an additional special education teacher to support students with more moderate disabilities. One area of kind of vulnerability and weakness that we have is related to our instructional technology and a huge amount of instructional technology that flooded into our schools as a result of the pandemic and of COVID. And sometimes it can be difficult to maintain and keep track. We only have three people district-wide who work in the instructional technology department, and they are not building-based. So this proposal, which I've seen work very well, is to have a building-based inventory clerk at the high school who is monitoring our assets and making sure that we're seeing, seeing a return of the, of the Chromebooks at the high school. It'll ultimately be a wise investment. Otherwise, we are on the hook for anything that we don't get back and, because we lease them and have to return them at the end. We are proposing two additional FTEs in the maintenance department. As noted in, in the workshop, the maintenance department has not seen an increase in the budget since 2016. This was one of the areas that was initially not proposed for funding when we thought we had a more conservative revenue model. But we are proposing two additional craftsmen to assist with maintenance of our buildings. I think the, we don't have the facilities conditions assessment, but I think that assessment would support it. And then a district-wide family and community liaison. There are some of our smaller schools and district efforts that could use that additional support in the district. And so the recommended addition here is 2.1 million of salaries and wages. We had also broken up requests and recommendations into operating categories. And so we'll run through those. As noted, there are some curriculum investments proposed. One is pre-K curriculum materials and professional development. We are accounting for some of the high school requests and proposing some grant funding, although some of these we may want to consider for longer-term, longer-term investments. We do still have some ESAR money that we can spend in very limited categories. So we're proposing to fund ingenuity online classes, which is currently not in the budget, but we use, so we need to account for it, through ESAR, providing additional MCAS support through ESAR funding, stipending an after-school support position in four core subjects through ESAR funding. And then jumping ahead, the science and engineering, MCAS prep and intervention in February and June through ESAR funding, all of which would be allowable with the idea that it's taking, taking into consideration pandemic effects on learning. The athletic coach positions that you see here would formally add unified track and unified basketball into your budget, which I think is a wonderful addition, and I can't wait for the unified track season in a few weeks. The high school is preparing to undergo the accreditation process. That accreditation process has changed a little bit. It's a little less onerous than it used to be. But we do still have to host some visitors to our school as well as provide stipends to staff for leading the accreditation process. And so that is proposed at $12,000 for this year. And I think there will be a second year of expenses in FY25. I know accreditation is difficult and some, we sort of stepped away from it for a little bit. But there is, I think, a reason to take it up now, particularly as we consider the JROTC program. The application does ask about your accreditation. And so it does, it does carry some weight for, for other reasons. Yep.
I have a question about the, didn't he ask accreditation? So it carries some weight there. You know, are schools required to, I mean, are schools required to get, by state law or anything, to get accredited? Or do we have to get an accreditation through some sort of?
I'm not aware of any law. I think that there are places in which it gets examined. So it might be looked at from the college's perspective. If a student is applying, it might get looked at. If somebody's looking to move into town, the JROTC program is looking as to whether or not you have accredited status in your community. But I don't know of any law that requires it.
Okay. But just as, as going through it, a number of, I, I have yet to see the benefits. But just as I was going through it, a number of, I have yet to see the benefits of this accreditation for 20 years in the business. I know what it's like going through it for a bunch of different schools. And I just, I'll just, just interesting. Okay. I just, I just thought, at the beginning, I thought it's something you had to do, because I was like, why are we wasting all this time? You know, and I, but now I know that you don't have to do it. But I mean, that's all. I was wondering. Thank you.
Sure. Ms. Friedman has identified some additional areas that she would like to support through site-based funds. This would include things like some, some funding to support students on field trips who might not be able to afford them. Also, some recognition programs at the high school to build positive spirit and culture. We have a need for translation and interpretation services in the special education department. We have a number of areas here and be happy to go into more detail related to proposed professional development. But one thing that I notice coming in new, that I don't see that I've seen in other budgets, are kind of specific line items to support PD in particular areas that are district priorities or needed by our educators. So in special education, they're looking to formally provide PD for para-professionals, related service providers, and, and safety care. Google Workspace for Education is increasing in cost, so that is proposed at 15,000. We have some inflationary pressures for gasoline and diesel and an anticipated increase in added district transportation, a need for more bus monitors. We are also proposing to increase contracted services for maintenance and the maintenance reserve. We are not hitting the requested amount, but again, trying to incrementally increase that. The original increase that you saw at the workshop was 5%, and this doubles that to 10% of its current, current amount in the budget. That also pertains to custodial supplies, as well as 10% for vehicle leasing. I am proposing that we hire a consultant to continue on with facilities planning. The facilities conditions assessment will also take into account an enrollment forecast, so we can do some long-term planning in the district. Attorney Moynihan has been working to consolidate all of our contracts and unify them, streamline them, make sure they are legally sound. And so, we are proposing contract management software to manage that. I would like to run some graduate-level courses across the district for leaders, as well as our educators, to support diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging. We have a need to increase mentor stipends, so that is proposed from the assistant superintendent's office. Inflation pressures on our assessment line at 5%. We have a number of teachers who are engaged in additional independent professional development through course-taking. And so, we've been exceeding our budget in course reimbursement, and so we have a need to kind of match the budget with our spending, so we have an increase there. Licensing costs increased in a few categories are listed there. The assistant superintendent has proposed professional development to support curriculum development, particularly as we think about aligning towards the vision of a graduate. Testing and assessment supplies going up for student services. We have a nurse that is currently grant-funded at FCEC, and that grant is ending. We are not going to put this in the general fund. We do see that ESAR could continue to support the nurse and the nursing services at our Family and Community Engagement Center. And then the last two, increase the interpreters' budget lines for EL services and increasing texts and curriculum materials. A lot of that's licensing costs for ELs, and we need to increase that because we have more students for a total of 793,639. We do have some reductions proposed in the budget. We have some one-time expenses from last year, including AP Human Geography tests, texts, some seed money for Hox Nest Supplies, which is a school store at the high school, the Centreville Go Swing, and the high school cabinet replacement in the art department. And then, in terms of salaries and wages, the Centreville Library Assistant had been a .8, looking to put that at .5, which is consistent with FTEs at our other buildings. And then, with the addition of .8 Science at BCIS and the PBL Coach position, reducing the Technology Teacher from 1.0 to .6, based on the number of sections that they have there. I'm going to turn it over to Chris to talk a little bit about the revolving funds.
Thanks, Sarah. The slide just gives you a little bit more detail about the offsets that were highlighted in the earlier slide that showed the overall budget for FY '24. So on your left is, is our school choice numbers, our FY '22 actual, FY '23 budget, FY '24 proposed. We, as mentioned earlier, are budgeting for $600,000 offset, which leaves us with a balance in that fund of approximately $1.6 million. And then, our circuit breaker number has come in at a little over $2 million. That will be applied to next year's budget as an offset. We're estimating next year, at this point, to come in at just under $2 million at 1.95.
And lastly, in conclusion, I captured this quote from Mara Healy, our governor, that the Student Opportunity Act calls for historic investment in our schools, our students, our educators, and their futures. And I think this budget reflects that. And we're happy to answer any questions. And I'll stop there.
Excellent. Excellent presentation. Thank you very much. So I'll open it up. Does anybody have any questions? Go ahead, Joe.
Yeah. I just wonder, if you, I didn't see anything about substitute teachers. How are we doing with filling subs now? Are we having any issues with that? I don't, unless I missed it, I didn't see any sub things going on. How are we, how's the world of substitutes going?
We did make an adjustment in the budget related to subs. I'll ask Chris to chime in on the details with that.
Yeah, we've added $40,000 to two particular sites. It was BUE and maybe BWB, where we looked at the numbers and needed to increase those this year to account for what we've been currently spending. But the total increase is $40,000 proposed.
I think it's still a struggle in terms of filling some of those substitute positions. I think it's better, but it does seem to be kind of a constant, a constant look, a constant review. We're kind of bringing new people in. And we've, we've gotten more flexible. So to be considered a building-based sub, for example, it was five, we expect you here all five days, every day. And there are some folks who said, well, we can be there four days consistently. And we've kind of said, that's, that it meets the spirit.
Four is better than zero.
Yeah. It meets the spirit of a building-based sub. And so, we've, we've exercised a little bit of flexibility to try to recruit some people.
And do we, and do you know, is that, if you've spoke with the subs, is there issues with, do we lose subs to other districts? Is it competitive? Is it local? I mean, is it, I mean, is it, I mean, it seems, it seems to be, from what I hear sometimes, it's, and I know as a teacher, that when, you know, when your aide has to go cover someone, it's two things. One, you don't have your aide that you rely on to help you with the students. And then, they, it's kind of a message that their job's not that important, so they can go sub. And it's kind of a little bit of a morale killer. So I don't know how often that's happened. Do we have any data on how often we're not getting classes covered or anything like that?
Yeah, I think we do have some data. But fortunately, as it relates to para-professionals getting pulled, we have worked out an agreement with the union where individual teachers can volunteer to go on a sub list. This works particularly well at the intermediate school and the high school. And they can give up their prep period and get compensated for the hour for the additional work as a sub. And so, that, that I think improved upon a situation previously where people were getting pulled from PLCs and such. And that prevents paras from getting pulled as much. Does it happen? It does. It is, you know, not something that we want to do. It's kind of a last resort. But that has helped us be a little bit more flexible with subs. But I think it's still hard. I don't think it's, I don't think it's easy.
I get, yeah. I agree. Thank you.
I'll start on it. Oh, go ahead. Go ahead, yeah.
So it's just related to the subs. So for the site that you weren't able to get the full, full-time, and you have the .8 sub, permanent sub, are you able to fill the .2 by any chance with a regular person for one day a week?
I don't think they've been able to do that, no.
They just haven't been able to get a commitment. Okay. Thanks.
But we're open to that if anybody's watching.
Andrea, do you have any questions about the budget process in general, or what, the presentation?
I do. And it was a thorough presentation. For me, I'm interested in this, the shift in terms of having more administrators across our elementary schools. You noted a need. And for me, I'm seeing additional focus and lens towards curriculum development, having an additional administrator there. And I think that that would also, in terms of lessening the load for those principals, lend itself to further community engagement in terms of reaching out, strengthening those bonds. Talked about Gateway as a program that is widening its scope in the district in terms of accessibility and will continue to do so. So that's how I'm seeing it. Is, could you maybe elaborate more? Because what I, it appears that under the leadership of Governor Mara Healy, that it's clear that that investment is a top priority. And that's backing up with some, I think you noted that the increase 32.32 was the largest in the state. And so, we're, we're looking, that's refreshing. And so, I'm starting, you know, we're going to add, excuse me, we'll add administrators at the, at the younger level, which can free up those principals there to then further engage, encourage, inspire our families, which should be directly correlate to our students. So that's very encouraging. But if you wanted to speak further to that, and then just my follow-up, just kind of along with that, is in terms of supporting students in closing achievement gaps and opportunities, you've mentioned a lot of staff-based investment. How does that balance with the facilities? The investment in our facilities, which I know is critical at some of the elementary schools?
Those are great questions. I think you've identified, you know, an additional piece around the benefit of having more assistant principals at the K-3 schools. And with identifying family engagement, for example, as something that the principals would be freed up to do. And I think that's one, one example that could be expanded on. An assistant principal really, so many times focuses on the operations and the day-to-day, leaving the principal to be more strategic. Not that they wouldn't be focusing on operations and day-to-day, but be more strategic, working with teachers, that instructional leadership, providing feedback and opportunities for growth, communication with our community, collaboration with our PTOs. So I think that there are a lot of opportunities that would be raised by having the assistant principals in the buildings. And I see the difference, I think, in terms of what we currently have. What we have, we have schools with assistant principals or halftime assistant principals and schools that don't. And, and I think creating equity and creating more opportunities for each and every family, each and every community is, would be one benefit coming from that. The other, the other note that you mentioned was around facilities and the balance. I think it's a great question. 10% might not be enough, and two people might not be enough. I think that's something, when we have more data from the facilities conditions assessment and have a better understanding of the scope of the recommendations from there, I think we could be a bit more kind of concrete in terms of what our needs are. But I think the 10% increase in two positions is a, is a step in the right direction.
Joe, do you have any other questions?
Yeah, just a bravo to the, the new funding formula. It's a step in the right direction. However, I don't think it's going to, I think we're still going to fall short. And I think it's, it's important for the public to know when it's students classified as high needs. If you have a, if you know someone or you have a child with special needs, you know, just, some students take more care and more, need more support to get, to help them in all different ways. And, and that costs money, because it costs FaceTime with adults to be there and/or with equipment to help them, or tutors. There's lots of things that happen. Or if a student isn't speaking English, we need to help these students out. So it, the, our students are more, we have an increase of almost 50% in high needs. It was from like 44% to 70%, almost, almost doubled the number of high-need students in the last 10 years. So when people look at the budget, they're going to say things like, oh, 8 this percent, oh, why is it costing X, Y, and Z? It's because our students, our neighbors, our children have more needs. So we need to meet them and help them. That's what we do. That's what schools do. So we educate all the children. And that's all, I think, I, I hope they, it's, people outside of the schools have trouble seeing that. They don't work with students that have, or maybe if they don't, if they don't have a child with special needs, they don't know. So that's, that's where a lot of the money's going, is that we're trying to help, help our, help us kids.
Can I respond to that? Just quantitatively, I'd love to add maybe some numbers to Joe's point around, it doesn't quite feel like enough. The foundation budget's going up 11.84%. That's what the state is saying is inadequate education. Now, we, we're, we're paying more than foundation now by about 24, last year, I think it was 24 or 26%. So the foundation is going up, but our, our expense isn't going up 11.84%. It's going up 7.8%. So that bar that's been set for Barnstable isn't, isn't going up at the same rate as the foundation budget is going up. So those would be some comparisons and numbers to perhaps keep in mind.
And compared to other school districts, are we similar ballpark of per pupil spending? Or is it?
No, we are. So I did take a look in the region, and our per pupil spending in the region is, is low, as is that amount over the foundation budget.
Can I just jump on Joe's, that exact thing? So when you, I mean, so our number, our per pupil is the lowest on Cape? Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes. And with this new kind of, with this new Opportunity Act saying that it's more expensive to educate kids, did, we went up, what, I'm sorry, you were throwing out a lot of numbers. So 11%?
11, 11.8% is the foundation.
Okay. So we pay the least amount for kids, for our students, but that number, the state is saying we should be paying more than any, did anybody else go up 11.82% on Cape Cod?
No, I don't believe so. I didn't look exactly at that, but I, I would be very surprised.
So we have the most high-needs kids on the Cape?
Yes.
Would you, would that be a fair assessment of where we're at? Because that's why we went up 11.82%.
And 32% in Chapter 78, yeah.
Right. Okay. Okay. So I just wanted to make that point, just, Kathy, I'll go to you, and then I'll ask my questions. Go ahead. It's your turn.
So, most of my questions have already been asked in previous workshops and school committee meetings. I want to jump on about the assistant principals. Another benefit to increasing and making sure we have enough assistant principals is mentoring to move within the district, to move up within the district. It's difficult to acquire staff. So by having these additional assistant principals, I think we may be able to have a better succession plan going down the road. Historically, we've had great retention with our staff. And so, given how tough it is in the education market these days, I think it's really important for our student body to see how, when they recognize a face such as the newer principals who were teachers in their buildings. And that may give them an incentive to go into education and pursue that as a lifelong career. So I think it, it benefits us from the administration point of view, but I think it also benefits our district looking down the road to filling vacant positions. I really did not have any additional questions. I know I pester the heck out of Chris. He did provide me with some extra detail. I think that your presentation was extremely thorough and transparent. I hate that word, because I think if you have to tell people it's transparent, you shouldn't. But I mean, it, the booklet was great, a great addition to our materials upfront. And the additional answers to the questions were on target. And I'm all set for tonight.
Thank you.
One more day to go.
So I just have, so first of all, I think, I want to say for the public is, this is a lot of money. a lot of money. So I want people to realize, I know you said it at the beginning, but I want to underscore it again, yeah, we're asking a few questions here and there, but this has been going on. I think this is probably our sixth, seventh, eighth maybe meeting about this. We've had workshops, we've been doing a lot. Yeah, you come and give the presentation to the public, but there's been a lot of stuff that we do at public workshops, but no one comes and they're not televised. So I just want to know, just make it blatantly clear and abundantly clear to the public that this is not something, in our vote on April 5th, we may have some more questions, but it tends by that point to be not a lot of questions. It's more about the changes. But this has been going on, even us asking questions as it's been formulated. So I want to make that abundantly clear. One thing I do want to also about proving things, and not that I think people like, think that we're lying or anything, that our demographics are changing or anything like that, but one thing that I know we voted on last summer, that I think probably a lot of people don't realize, is we used to have, kids used to pay for lunch. Kids used to pay for lunch at every school except for I think maybe two schools in the district. I think there might have been one school in the district, and then I think it might have gone to two over the years where there was free lunch. And the federal government, I believe, has come out. So we have the state saying that we need more money for the high-needs kids. We have, the federal government came out this summer and said our high-needs kids are economically disadvantaged. We had, we hit a number, trigger number, that allowed the entire district to go free and reduce lunch, or free lunch. And I think that can't be overstated enough because you know what? It isn't the Cape of 30 years ago. It's changed. And that's like, and I think some people don't realize that, and stuff like, like ELL. We've, over the last bunch of years, have almost, we've almost developed another school system within our school system. Because there were people that are only ELL teachers, we have ELL staff, quite a bit of them, as you can see by the numbers, that weren't there 10 years ago. So that's a whole nother school system for ELL to transition them from ELL to, so they're not ELL anymore. So I think people need to realize that that's a big change and that costs money. So it's just, it's changed. And like I said, for me, the biggest change that people can see is every one of our schools, every one of our kids no longer has to pay for lunch. So the state government's saying that we've changed and the federal government told us last summer we've changed for at least economically disadvantaged. And that's one of the, as you said, the numbers is from, supporting your bar graph, I want to put it in real terms, because bar graph is a bar graph, but you know what, real terms, every kid in the town of Barnstable, because we hit that threshold with the federal government, every kid in the town of Barnstable gets a free lunch. So I just think that that can't be overstated. Other than that, I do like the budget because I know I, and I know actually, I think a bunch of us over the years have said that we want money, like there seem to be a lot more people that weren't working with kids. And I'm like, and I'll speak only for myself, that like, and I know Joe's shaking his head because I remember Joe and Kathy, and, but this is a really kids-centered budget. There is not a lot of administration or kids, as I say, people who don't work with kids. And I like that because I think for a while, from my opinion, we were getting too much there and not enough with this, but this budget is, I mean, you got to have some supports and I get that, but like, it wasn't heavy on supports. It was, we're hiring a lot of people, or we potentially could be hiring a bunch of people, but it's centered on the kids. Because that's the staff we need, our enrollment's going up, and therefore, that's what it's for. So I appreciate the fact that it's very student and kid-oriented. I think that's a great thing. That's, and my frustration over the last few years has definitely been answered in this budget. So thank you. Anybody else have any questions?
One more quick thing. This was awesome. I love this line. I mean, this was, the one we've been dreaming about for so long. And so this was fantastic. And I just want to make sure I got it straight with what Mike said. So the foundation budget calculation says we should be spending the most per pupil on the Cape, but pretty much-ish.
I'd like to be sure that I did not look at the foundation budgets in area communities, but ours is going up the most.
Yes, yes, but we're spending the least, we're spending the least.
We're spending the least per pupil, yeah.
Okay, and then if, and similar districts off Cape, have you done any comparisons to similar-sized districts off Cape also? Just curious. Similar size, similar makeup?
So I could do that and.
Yeah, if you could just bring that back just to the April, at the April.
Absolutely. There's some information, there's some information in the October presentation around per pupil costs comparing like Marlborough.
Yeah.
Marlborough's per pupil is lower, you know, so there were some regional comparisons and we're kind of in line with Marlborough, but I can get some information about their foundation increase and Chapter 70 increase.
I'm most concerned I was by Cape because that's a competing schools and that's where students are going to. So, all right, awesome. Thank you so much. Awesome job, both of you guys.
I did look at their Chapter 70 increases and nobody's near 30% DY would come in second. You know, and they're more, I think, in the, you know, 10 to 15 range, 10 to 15%.
Any other questions? Kathy?
I don't have any questions, but I see some of our building administrators in the audience in our department, and I want to thank you for coming. I know you're the veteran, so you know I would call you out on your building budgets. And so you had the backbone to show up tonight, and I really appreciate seeing you. And I appreciate all you do for the students of Barnstable. So thank you for attending and lucky for you, no questions about Sped or High West or Centerville, so you're good.
When I said Kathy, every one of them held their breath, Kathy. No other questions? Okay, we'll be moving on to 3.2, FY24 Budget Public Hearing. We will now begin the public hearing on the proposed fiscal year 24 school district budget. There have been several public meetings to discuss, consider, and revise the proposed budget. We will generally follow the guidelines for public comment. Speakers, please keep your comments to three minutes or less. If you wish to speak a second time on this topic, please wait until all speakers have had an opportunity to address the community at least once. Comments made during this portion of the meeting should pertain only to the proposed FY24 school district budget. All other topics should be reserved for the general public comments section later in the meeting. Having said that, I now open the public hearing. I see nobody. I will now close the public hearing on the FY24 budget. I will now move on to 4.1, approved school committee meeting minutes for March 1st, 2023. Can I get a motion, please?
Move to approved school committee meeting minutes of March 1st, 2023.
Second.
Having a motion seconded. This is a voice vote, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, nay. Abstains. I just have it passed unanimously. 4.2, student envoy report. I actually, the student envoys said that they were going to have nothing to report tonight, so I told them they could have the night off. Moving on to public, 4.3, public comment. Public comment will be limited to three minutes per individual and 30 minutes total. There will be no debate or action taken on public comment items. The committee will take items under advisement or the individual will request an item be placed on a future agenda. The chair will also allow public comment at his discretion during the meeting. Having said that, public comment is now open. Seeing nobody, I will now close public comment. Moving on to 4.4, school committee comments and subcommittee liaison reports. I will open that up to everybody.
Yeah, so just going to report out from Climate and Culture Committee. We were, last time we met, just a little summary of what we did, we always start every meeting with some little data gathering. We call it roses and thorns, but it's kind of like seeing things that are happening in our schools. And when we were reporting out, we've discussed a few possible suggestions with the superintendent. One of the teachers shared that they often notice that, you know, sometimes students are struggling, yet teachers can't find time to address it. Or if a teacher, when reflecting on the day later on, they get home, when they ride home, they go, oh my God, I forgot about this student, is there a way that we could somehow utilize Aspen to maybe, or something, to, a way that we could kind of, you know, flag those students for intervention? Because a lot of times during the school day, teachers see that a student's in need, but there's 23 students in the room. Is there a way that we can kind of do that so that someone can check up and make sure that students, make sure that students are taken care of? There's also a discussion about the style literacy testing, how that also sometimes takes away from instruction from the rest of the class because it's a one-on-one thing. And we were talking about how when they were doing Dibbles years back, they'd pull students groups at a time, and the superintendent was going to look into that to see if there's a way that maybe they could do the style literacy testing in a similar fashion that wasn't taking the teacher away from the rest of the class. We also discussed the vision statement and, and everyone has supported that, those unanimous support. And so next meeting will be, I'll be sharing that with you guys with the language change. Also, the, we previously created a student culture survey, and we want, hopefully next meeting, we'll be sharing that also with you guys, some way that we can, we get the BTA, they give us a teacher culture every year. They give us a kind of a teacher, what's going on with the teachers, and the culture and climate for the teachers. And we get to look at that data. I'm waiting to hear back from the, from the teachers' union to see if I can share that data with the subcommittee. So if they give us permission to look at that, that would be some interesting data to look at as a subcommittee to discuss climate and culture on the teacher's side. But we developed the survey for students so that we could also have kind of a dipstick and track how culture's changing between buildings, between certain populations. So we'll be sharing that with you next time. And I think that's, that's what happened at the last meeting. Andre, unless you'd like to share?
Sorry, Andre, do you have anything to chime in? Are you all set?
Yeah, just quickly to add on to, you know, what Joe was saying, you know, the last meeting, you know, I think that, you know, we clearly defined, you know, our stakeholder groups, you know, in terms of Culture and Climate Committee having a lens on the experiences, the day-to-day reality, and the feedback from our educators. And them giving, having the opportunity to, you know, express what's going on in real time and having members of the school committee and also the superintendent there to receive that feedback and react in real time, I think is invaluable. Also, our community members that take part, Culture and Climate Committee and their feedback in terms of what's going on in real time. So just, Joe mentioned a lot of it, but it was noted that a report and recommendations were something that the school committee was looking for. And just want to say that data collecting, it has gone on consistently and, you know, stand ready to make that report and provide concise recommendations for the committee.
Kathy?
Policy Subcommittee continues to work through those sections. We're in the middle of Section J. Our next meeting is April 14 at 1:00 PM via Zoom. We reviewed Policy AC, which is in addition to some Section J policies, and that will be on the agenda later tonight. There was a collaborative board meeting last Wednesday. They're making their budget at the same time as we are. They've encouraged all the board members to make their respective districts aware of the services they are able to provide to students, and they're encouraging district superintendents to make sure that when students need alternate placements, that they're aware the collaborative can provide many of those services. So the Yarmouth Site for the Middle High School Program, Waypoint, is due to open in April, I believe Superintendent Ahern, you toured that? Yeah. And there, our next board meeting may be scheduled there. So that's an open meeting, just as school committee is. If anybody in the district is interested, they could attend an open meeting and see the new site.
Okay, and I just have one thing. If you missed a little bit earlier, we had the characters, actors, actresses from Mary Poppins come and give us a song and talk about their show. So I just want to plug it again because it's, now we're a little bit later in the meeting. So Mary Poppins is being done by, at the high school. The dates are March 17th, 18th, 24th, and 25th at 7:00 PM, and March 18th and 25th at 2:00 PM. It's being done at the PAC at the high school, and you can buy tickets. I don't remember the website, he said, I'm going to be honest, but you can buy tickets at the door. So please go and support our local actors and actresses. Okay, well now.
Put the QR code up on the main page of the website, and that might help people find it more easily.
Yep, yep. Can I say one more thing?
Yeah, go ahead.
So just a shout out to the high school. I heard that today they had this, a big spirit event, and I heard it was awesome. There was, you know, so I think it was, I think Brent Jansen was one of the coordinators, so thank you, Mr. Jansen. And I, I know that there was like basketball games and hall decorating and everyone was, I mean, and it sounded like it was just a spirit festival. And that's, those are the things that students remember, you know? They feel part of that. They come in, they decorate, they decorate the hall, they do this, they get, it's all fun and you just feel like you're part of something bigger. And, and you know, so hats off to Liz and everyone at the high school. I just heard it was wonderful. So that's great to bring that spirit. I mean, you know, let's hear it. And that's what, I don't know, that's what I say.
Okay, now moving on to 4.5, superintendent's report. Sarah, turning it over to you.
Thank you. I'll pick up where Joe left off. I thought Lucy might be here to talk about it, saying that she didn't have anything to report, but she's selling herself short because she and other class officers, along with the class advisors, put together today's Spirit Day, along with Mr. Shea's class, who is looking to increase school spirit and school culture. Students came in this morning to finalize hallway decorations and then split into two groups. Grades eight, nine, and 10 reported to the PAC, and the 11th and 12th grade reported to the main gym. In the PAC was karaoke and Family Feud, among other games, including a school-friendly TikTok challenge. I don't know exactly what that entailed, but it did not entail what we normally think of when we think of TikTok. And then in the main gym, they were doing tug-of-war and other field games. And the day culminated with a full school photo for everybody. So I received, I know it was, it's hard to put something like that together for so many people, about 2,000 people over at the high school. So it's nerve-wracking and hard to pull together. But received just the most excited text and phone call from the principal later on in the day, just really, everybody seemed to have a great time. So kudos to everybody at the high school for putting that together. I wanted to share a couple highlights related to our faculty and staff. I always like to kind of point out when our faculty and staff shine, and you had talked about one of our music teachers, Kathy, at a previous meeting related to a podcast that she was on. I wanted to note that over February vacation, Michael Andrews, English teacher at the Intermediate School, was a presenter in Hawaii, presenting to the Hawaii Department of Education and the Association of Middle Level Education. He spoke about effective project-based learning. He led two sessions. One was developing project-based learning mindsets and practices for the now, helping teachers to build a foundation of mindsets to build classroom activities upon. And then he also presented backwards planning for effective project-based learning. He had educators focus on state standards and provided them with the opportunity to mine their curriculum to begin designing student actions that allow them to plan out a unit with an end goal ready. So we're really proud that Michael represented Barnstable Public Schools so well at that conference. Director of Teaching and Learning, Grade 6 through 12, Jen Perry, along the same theme, recently presented at PBL Works at their Professional Development Annual Meeting, where all of the full-time PBL Works staff convened. She and representatives from Medway Public Schools, the KIP Academy in Lynn, and the Mary Wash Elementary School in Springfield were invited to present after initially sharing the exciting work happening in Massachusetts to the 1-8 Foundation and PBL Works. The presentation was entitled Stories of Innovation and Inspiration, and like Mr. Andrews, talked about highlights from BIS, NYPBL, and the school, and the why of it over the past five years. Sharing both a quantitative impact in terms of the school's progress, expanding from 12 to 37 unique project-based learning projects, with an impressive 100% of students participating in two projects over the course of the year. And she also noted the impact on students with some quotes from a student who recently participated in our vision of a graduate process at the high school, who had remarked, "I think that students need a lot from school to thrive in the future. I think that when they leave school, they should know how to think creatively, innovatively, critically, and independently with the ability to connect." So thank you to Jen as well for representing Barnstable so well. This is a little bit of an advertisement to members of the community who are interested in how government works. The Citizens Leadership Academy is back. The Citizens Leadership Academy is back this year. And various town departments do presentations for interested citizens to learn about how government works. So next Tuesday, March 21st, will be the school department's participation in the Citizens Leadership Academy. I'll be leading a presentation about our schools. And it would also include a tour of the high school with Principal Friedman. So people will have an opportunity to come in and see the high school, which is an amazing place with the murals everywhere and just a wealth of opportunities for students. So invite interested community members to participate. It begins at 6:30 next Tuesday at the high school. And then, one other item. I think oftentimes people are questioning or wondering, and we mentioned it earlier, in terms of guidance and psychological services that student, that schools provide. So we've sent messages out to families, we've sent messages out to providers in the community, the fire departments. But I wanted to share the, kind of a big effort at the high school to address student mental health. Coming up in the next few weeks, Barnstable High School will once again be offering depression awareness and suicide prevention as part of the SOS Signs of Suicide Program. This program has proven to be successful at increasing help-seeking by students concerned about themselves or a friend. The program has shown a reduction in self-reported suicide attempts by 40 to 64% in randomized control trials. Students will come out of the program with an understanding that depression is a treatable illness, explain that suicide is a preventable tragedy that often occurs as a result of untreated depression, provide students in training in how to identify serious depression and potential suicidality in themselves or a friend, to impress upon teens that they can help themselves or a friend by taking the simple step of talking to a responsible adult about their concerns, and to help students know who they can turn to in school for help if they need it. We run this program with 12th graders, 8th graders, and 10th graders. A trained professional, school counselors, school psychologists, school social workers, or the school nurse will present an educational lesson on depression and awareness. And then an SOS screening tool is used to assess thoughts, feelings, and behaviors, which then get communicated if there's concerns to parents and guardians with referrals for additional support. So the tool doesn't provide a diagnosis, but it can give an indication of whether a young person is at risk. And I want to thank our counseling team, in particular, and our school nurses for these lessons and the screeners. It is certainly impactful to the entire students and something, real-life skills. And I really applaud, and it's making a return. So I wanted to make sure that our community is aware of that.
Excellent, thank you very much. Any questions? Seeing none? Okay. Thank you. We'll be moving on to 4.6 Assistant Superintendent Report. Kristin?
Thanks. I have a couple of slides and, Mo, do you mind handing me the clicker? So I have a couple of slides and I also have some non-slide material as well. Thank you. So as the superintendent mentioned, part of my comments tonight are an update on the recent STAR Winter Benchmark Assessment, along with a few other items. I just wanted to, I think maybe I can talk a little bit for a moment about the STAR assessment. Joe, you had mentioned the time that it takes. So the, they're probably referring to the CBM, the Curriculum-Based Measure Assessment that we give early elementary. It's part of the Risk for Dyslexia Screening. It is an individual assessment. I am not well-versed in DIBELS, but I do believe that's a one-on-one assessment as well. But I'd have to check with my fellow experts on that one. I do understand what they're saying about time, but it does provide students or staff with really valuable information, particularly as we drill down deeper into some of the early literacy and reading STAR assessments as well. But happy to talk more about that. So starting with the overview of the Winter STAR Assessment. The approach that I took, this is just a high-level overview of the kind of growth, in this case, from the fall to winter. And certainly, if more data, if you'd like to see more data at a future meeting, happy to, to bring that forward. So I chose a couple of grade levels, starting at the elementary level with Grade 2 and Grade 3. So we're looking at growth versus achievement for Grade 2 reading. So each dot on the graph, so it gives the school name. The first number is the student growth percentile, the average growth percent, student growth percentile for the, in this case, Grade 2 students at each site on the reading assessment, the Winter Benchmark. The second number is the percent proficient. So on STAR proficiency is at or above benchmark. And the district, using MTSS guidelines, we have set the benchmark to a rigorous level. We have used data, now Grade 2 obviously not an MCAS grade, but we've aligned the trends that we've seen on STAR performance correlating to MCAS performance. We're starting to see a stronger trend line now as we're getting multiple years of, of real, non-COVID MCAS assessments. So we'll have, we'll be able to tweak that as, as we move forward in coming years. But it is around the 80th percent. So again, here's our five elementary schools. The, again, I'll just reiterate, the student growth percentile is the first number. I was really pleased to see the degree of growth. So the moderate growth is equivalent to one year's growth, typical growth, in a annual, in a year's of education. But you can see that we have some schools that are accelerating the growth. So their SGP's are in the high-growth level. So that indicates that they're growing at, above one year's growth. They're on track for that. So Grade 2 reading, and then followed by same structure, Grade 3 reading. And again, looking at growth. So we are still at least seeing every school in moderate to high growth of our five elementary schools. And then again, the percent proficient, and again, proficient, proficient being defined as students falling into at or above. Moving on to math, Grade 2 math. Again, just going to repeat myself. We're seeing moderate growth, but definitely pushing, we're really seeing more of a trend to the high growth in Grade 2 math. And the student growth percentile, again, moderate growth, demonstrating trending towards a year's worth of typical growth, which is what we expect. But also excited to see the increase in the high growth. So that really is a sign of some potential gap closing. And then Grade 3 math. Growth and, and achievement. Yep.
Is proficiency defined as the, how, the percent over a certain benchmark? And that benchmark is used, is it like the per-grade? Is it proficiency defined by grade? Like Grade 3 is expected to be proficient at score X? And these are the percent that are above score X? And is that taken by, from like the median score of that grade or?
So the, I think we've had this, we've talked around this a bit before, just in terms of the 80th percentile. It's a moving target, right?
So, so we have 56, so West Village is, so that's the, that's what you're using as the proficient? So 20%, the 80th percentile?
Yes.
So you have to be about, so if I look at Centerville with the 72, 47, so 50% of Centerville are in the 80th percentile or above? About? Is that what we're saying?
47% of the students are in-
The 80th percentile or above?
Yes, yep.
Okay. All right, so I'm just looking, so when you see something like an 18, that's typical because you're expecting about 20% to be in the 80th percentile or above, right? That would be your expectation if they're similarly distributed to other students that age, right? So I'm just trying to wrap my head around it. So, so, so I think that we had this conversation last year, which is why if you use 50% as a benchmark, it'll be more sensitive to small changes and you'll see better trends. Because it's, because you could, I don't know, I think it'd just be another, you could, you'll pick up more stuff because there's more variability in that area than the number of kids that jump into the 80th percentile. There'll be more kids will jump across the 50th percentile than will jump from 79th to the 82nd percentile, you know? There's a big, there's a, if you look at a distribution, there's like so many kids in here. You'll be very sensitive for a kid to go from the 48th to the 50th versus how many kids are really going to jump from the 79th to the 82nd, you know? So if you want a robust measure that's more sensitive to trends in the, so nerdy. Go in the middle of the pile, it's, I think it'll just give you more, it'll just be a clearer look of what's happening in general. My opinion. Statistically speaking, if you use the 50th percentile, you'll have, you'll have, you'll see more stuff that you want to see. That's all.
Well, and I think that that's a good point. And I think that's a conversation that we have that's ongoing in terms of, like I said, we've set the bar really high. And so we don't see as much of that swing.
I don't know how many kids made it from like, you know, first quartile of, like, you know, all these, there might be a lot more kids making these things, you know what I mean? It's hard to find any metric to measure growth anyway, so, you know, I understand. But 80th percentile, you know, there's arguments for both.
Well, and I'll give you, I'm going to give you a different look when we move into grades four through nine. And it is a very different look, but also I think can speak a little bit to that movement between ranges. So for the upper grades, it would have been three dots on this, just trying to look for a different look. And we started with students that are in urgent intervention. And what was their movement, what was the amount of movement out of urgent intervention? So this is in reading for grades four through nine. And so if we look at Grade 4, in the fall, we had 30% that were considered in the range of urgent intervention. So that's the opposite end of the spectrum. And so what happened is between the winter and the fall, we had that percentage of students, you know, about 10, 12% of the students-
Moved out of urgent, and so they moved up?
They moved, they either moved to intervention-
Up or down?
Well, they can only move up.
Okay.
So this is your lowest-
So you want the arrow to go, so this is a completely different look. So you want the arrow to go down because that means more kids are leaving urgent and going into-
So our percent of urgent intervention is dropping. So this actually gives you that indicate-
Well, it shows the other, the other side. Because you were talking 80, the higher kids, and this is showing-
Let me guess, is this cut off at the 20th percentile? Because that'd be really interesting if, if that's what we were using. I'd be curious at what percentile they're at.
I think it is, is it the 19th percentile is the, the bridge, yeah.
Okay, so now we're looking at both ends. All right, now I go, okay, I just need something symmetric.
Different ages though. Different age groups, but-
This is good, all right.
And so you can see, obviously it varies in terms of how much movement. So Grade 5, not as much movement as we'd like. Grade 6 and Grade 9, so not seeing that shift out. I also think that some of that speaks to what Sarah was speaking about with the budget priorities and how do we put our resources in the places where there's the greatest need to support students. So when we're talking about interventionists to support math and reading. I will say, sorry Kathy-
No, that's okay, go ahead.
The one thing that I did want to add with respect to this is that for each of the grade levels, the growth, the, so again, student growth percentile was in the 50s, I think, across the board. I can check my notes.
So it was moderate versus high?
So it was moderate, but we are at least still seeing, we are still seeing at least that year's of growth. So Grade 4 was the average, SGP was 53. Grade 5 was 50. Grade 6 was 54. Grade 7 was 57. So they're, they're moving to that higher growth. Grade 8 was 53. And interestingly enough, Grade 9, their growth percentile was 58. So while we didn't see that, what we might have expected, student, where the data is still showing that there is student progress, student growth. And so hopefully, we're getting to that gap closing.
Is the SGP calculated similarly, that they do that on MCAS? Like, kind of like comparative to students with similar scores and similar cohorts previously?
Yes, except it's done more nationally.
Okay.
Because just, it's a nationally-normed assessment rather than- Yep. I'm sorry, so Kathy, you had a question?
Well, I was just going to talk about the factors that help us increase that growth. And am I correct or incorrect with the assumption that there is more types of direct reading instruction at the appropriate level in the lower grades to help students increase their growth? Rather than by the time you get to intermediate in the high school, the direct teaching of how to read and comprehend, the, what's available is maybe not as vast. And, and so to target that, in order to have growth, you need to have reading instruction or math instruction at the instructional level.
If I could choose one to be reading?
So that, so that students can have a realistic bar to, to measure up to. So with this, especially when we talk about so many gaps that have occurred over the last several years.
Yes, and I think, so Grade 6 and 7, there's one interventionist for each content area, for math and reading at the intermediate school, and that's for 800 students. When you think about the interventionist support at the elementary level, there might be one interventionist, but it's for a much smaller group. So we are better able to meet those needs. At the high school, the academic, it's not academic literacy, the, I don't have the right title, but academic literacy course, it's one class, one teacher, teaching five sections.
With a wider range of ability.
Yep, so, so the, we have interventions, but proportionally, you know, it's, and it's also how do we catch those students earlier on? And then there should be less of a need at the later grades. But we're still, as you know, working on catching up and addressing some gaps from COVID.
And is reading, is reading at the element, is reading taught by the, taught by the primary school teach, like their teacher teaches reading?
Yes.
The classroom teacher? Not, they don't have a reading specialist coming in? The reading specialist is for someone who's maybe falling in an area that needs some help. Are the teachers, are we teaching primarily phonics, letter sounds? Or is, what's, what's the program that we're in? Are our teachers trained on how to directly instruct phonetic awareness? Is that something that we're doing?
So our current program is Reach for Reading. And, but we supplement that with HEGARDY, which is the phonics component or the phonics program. We have had a lot of discussions, which are going to be continuing. And I'll be getting to that in a couple of minutes.
Okay.
But focused on phonics, and I think there's a lot of, we have a lot of people looking at a variety of phonics programs, research-based programs, and just looking at the various sequences and trying to align that with, with, with our current reading program at the moment.
Yeah, Kristin, for me, looking at the figures in 9th grade, it appears that there was no reduction, there was actually an increase. So just to clarify, this reading intervention, how does, how do our bilingual students factor in? Meaning, you know, we talked about students entering the district at the high school level that speak little English. Are they included in these figures in terms of needing reading intervention?
If they are newcomers students, they are not taking the STAR assessment. Similar to MCAS, they wouldn't be taking the reading assessment in their first year. I'm not sure if that answers your question.
Yes, it does. And so, again, you know, we're seeing these precipitous drops at the, you know, elementary, at the, at the Barnstable United. You know, in relation to the staff that we can deploy, you, you've noted that. But just some feedback, I'm a little bit concerned. You're in 9th grade, you know, this is a fundamental skill. We see that number going in the wrong direction. And you've provided an important clarification for me that, you know, we're not talking about our bilingual students. I know that you can read an IG message in 9th grade. You can read social media- You can read social media quite well. Those interactions are fluid. But, so that's a little bit concerning to me that these necessary interventions, you know, we're going in the wrong direction. I don't know if you can speak to that, you know, at the ninth grade. You need these fundamental skills to succeed in society. So that's something that, that, that sticks out to me. And maybe provide some more feedback there. You know, I work at a middle high school. You know, so I know that our students are more than capable. You know, so is it, is it a lack of, you know, but this is also a time when young people become distracted. Nonetheless, you need to be able to be, to read, to write, to function successfully in society. So just that ninth grade number, if you have any further, I know you have much more to get to, but that's something that's sticking out to me.
Yeah, so I mean, I would say one thing, and I haven't dug deeply into it, but one of the comments that we do here when we start looking at the student lists and we go back and we look at the time the student actually was engaged with the assessment. So that's one of the pieces of data that we, that we can gather. And so it ranges. We do have students that spend very little time on the assessment. I'm not going to make a judgment as to why. Did they, was it because it was so difficult? Was it because they weren't engaged in it because of something that was going on socially, emotionally? But I, so I think that's one factor. We do see that a little bit more at the later grades than we do at the earlier grades, although we do see it at the earlier grades as well at times. But I'm, I'm also concerned about the scores. So it's, those are the conversations of, you know, let's look at the data and what are the areas that we're, that we need to focus on? Whether it is a curriculum issue or if it's something we need to look at instructionally. So all of this feeds into conversations at the school level around curriculum and instruction.
Well, I thank you for that clarification, you know, because, again, that, that idea of work avoidance setting in. When, you know, you're in ninth grade, you're much closer to, to entering the workforce. So to, so to be, you know, that's something where, you know, our students, you know, can take some accountability there to recognize that these are fundamental skills and it's, it's quite serious. You know, these assessments, I mean, you know, Joe's an educator, Kathy, you know, the, the MTALs are four hours. And it took four hours to cross the bar.
It's a lot of reading.
So I think, again, that, that provides an important, I think our students are quite capable, but these assessments need to be taken seriously.
And I do think there's a piece connected with, you know, effective effort. We've been talking about that at BIS forever, and it's now starting to come back, which is really exciting. But it's about time, commitment, perseverance. So really, how do we get students to take on those mindsets? Goal setting, you know, don't, don't spend 20 minutes or 30 minutes on the assessment and, you know, work your hardest for me. Do it for yourself. You know, there has to be that sense of pride as well in setting a goal of, the next time I take this, I want to make sure that I'm focused and spending the time and, you know, really putting forth my best effort.
There's, oh, go ahead.
I was going to ask you a question. So I know Joe brought the reading. Can you just go back to that, to that slide, the reading versus the math for the younger kids?
Oh, for the younger, sure.
Yeah.
So we have grade three and, sorry.
Yep, so that's math.
Yep.
And go, okay, so that's read, that's reading for grade three. And then can you go forward to the grade three math?
Yep.
Okay, so my, my question is, I know Joe was bringing up about the reading and you were talking about the reading program. Is there any looking at the math program? Or, because I know you were talking about how the reading program was, like, you were looking at that and it was conversation about phonics and all of that stuff. But are we only looking at the reading, like, are we looking at the math program too to see if that's the best tool for our kids or?
Our conversations are always around, is our instruction and our curriculum getting us the results that we're looking for?
Okay.
So whenever we have our data meetings, we're looking at our curriculum, whether it's our scope and sequence. Are they performing poorly because that unit isn't covered? We didn't get that far, but also added instruction. So that's always part of the conversation.
Okay, because it just seems like there was more conversation, it just seems like there's more conversation about the reading program. And I know, like, we've had conversations and there was a reading program that was piloted, a bunch of reading programs that were piloted and all of that. Is there any look at the math program or is, is the concentration more on the reading program?
Right now, it's more on the reading.
Okay, why, if you don't mind me asking?
Because that's the grant funding that's, one, because that's the grant funding that's available, but also because Desi's identified that the Reach for Reading program is only partially meeting expectations. So it's created these opportunities for us to look at reading programs.
Okay, okay, yeah.
I would just chime in too, just from a capacity standpoint, I think sequencing ELA and reading particularly for K to three educators who are teaching both in the classroom would be, you know, sort of a wise thing to do. So long-term, thinking about a curriculum review cycle where we're looking at ELA, then we're looking at social studies and we're looking at math and science and sort of a predictable.
So right now, we're just at the reading, that's what, that's what, within that sequencing, that's what we're looking at right now, but reading. But all subjects will be looked at over time to make sure we're doing the most effective. And, and I assume data, this, this data is only one point of it, I get it. So, but it, it'll be looked at via the data lens, I know. Okay, okay.
Could I just look at the slide again of the struggling readers and they went for each grade, the ones that were below? And it had the 40% for the ninth graders, that slide again.
Go back to the ninth, the fourth and ninth.
Yeah, the ninth grades, yeah, this one right here. So which is interesting, so I don't know if you've listened to the, there's a podcast called Sold a Story. It's, it's quite amazing about the, the battle between whole word reading and phonics reading. And I remember there was a big deal when we were young, my mom, actually, we moved to the west side of Worcester because it was one of the few elementary schools that was still doing phonics when everyone else was going.
Hooked on phonics works for you?
Why was that such?
Don't we all remember the saying, hooked on phonics works for you?
There's no better way to create a, a market than beginning a whole bunch of people not to be able to read. So then you can make a billion dollars off phonics because it's, you know, all of the we know from neuroscience that it is, that those that are expert readers and great readers actually do scan every single letter. They just don't, they do it so quickly, but now we have the technology to actually follow people's eyes. Well, this whole podcast, journalist, her name is Emily Hanford. And she, Hanford, so she did a podcast called Sold a Story. And what's amazing is that what she talked about here is when students are learning kind of whole word ways, they show kind of decent progression at an early age, but as they start falling apart when their words get really complex because they haven't automatically learned how to chunk those sound, put those sounds together and really sound things out one letter at a time. So, you know, if, if, so what was interesting, the most interesting thing about that podcast is that education people thought that phonics was a conservative thing and education thought that that was, you know, so they, so that for political reasons, they were standing up against phonics when the science now shows that it actually is the best way for students to learn reading. Obviously, there's parts of words, there's some sight words, but most of the time it should be phonics based on neuroscience and what we know about the science of reading. It's been around for so long. But people, you know, it's a cognitive dissonance when you're told in your college, you know, when you go through school and you're turned on this stuff and your whole life you've been sold a story that, that here's how students do learn and later on find out that it's not. It's hard to change the minds of people. But you see this data coming up all the time. So it's just real interesting how politics can get in the way of, of like real education policy, you know? So we get sold this story that this is how it works. So we have generations of American children who aren't, who don't read well and don't like reading because they, they're not good at it, you know, they never really got there. So I'm just hoping we're using the science of reading and, you know, fundamentally making sure that the primary mode of reading instruction, decoding is phonics, not using, you know, visual, the picture of a tree. It started with a T, that must be a tree, that's not reading. It's a T and R and the two Es make T E. And, and we've known this for, for, for quite some time. So hopefully that our teachers will be trained in phonics or they're getting lots and lots of phonics. And I hopefully, that's what I hope is going on.
Okay, I'll turn it back over to you, Kristin. That was.
Well, no, and so I'm, this is a great conversation. It's great foreshadowing from you guys, but I'm going to finish with my math.
You never thought you would get to it.
So this is the same slide but for math for grades four through nine. And again, you know, seeing that from fall to winter, we're seeing that change, except for grade eight, which you can't see the green dots, it's hidden behind it, so not seeing that change there. But in this case, seeing that decline, nice to see that in ninth grade. So we're seeing that drop there. And just to share the student growth percentiles across these grades. So grade four is 46 SGP. Grade five is 53. Grade six is 51. Grade seven is 58. Grade eight is 47. And grade nine is 52. So we're still in the moderate range. I found it interesting that, you know, grade seven didn't have a huge change, but they are seeing that, the greatest growth. They're the closest to that high range. So I think that that's something to be looking at. But again, looking at this, talking about, is it a curricular issue, an instructional issue? And starting to unpack that with the curriculum leads and the staff.
Cool.
So, which then brings me, so I'm going to shift gears from the STAR assessment and I'm going to move into the GLEAM Grant, Growing Literacy Equity Across Massachusetts. I don't know if you recall, but it was probably about three months ago. I sent out an email to you all asking for some assistance. We needed to get a large stakeholder group to review the, the grant. I had two wonderful volunteers, thank you so much.
I was going to say, did I volunteer for that one, I think?
Yes, you did.
Kathy, were you, yeah.
So we did, we, we got the grant. We just found out that we were awarded the grant. And what's really exciting about it, so last year we did the, we also applied for an accelerated, and they weren't kidding, literacy grant, and they gave us three months to review, pilot.
That's the one I was talking about, right, yep.
We have two and a half years supported with consultants to go through this process, through this grant. So just real quickly, I wanted to share just the overview of the timeline. So we actually, we have our first webinar tomorrow. And so the, the plan for the grant, that should say August 2023, I think I missed a year. I really jumped the gun on this one. But we start with this systems analysis and needs assessment of, of the district. So all of the things that you have all mentioned about reading, the science of reading, phonics, that focus, what are we using? How does it align? That's all going to be part of this systems analysis, this needs assessment. There is a significant portion that's aligned with professional development, whether it's leadership development or as you can see from the third bullet, ongoing professional development for building-based literacy leaders and the lead, the groups, the school-based groups. So there's a significant portion that's connected to professional development at the kind of leadership level, but then also at the teacher level. So again, Joe, getting to what you're asking about, that is built into the, the structure of the grant. And then this ongoing support. In the next year, let's see if I have the dates right. All right, October, from October 23rd to August, 2023 to August 2024, this is going to be the bulk of the time dedicated to the identification and piloting and review of materials. So again, similar to what we did last year, but expanded out. And so we have time to breathe, really think about it, really work with it.
Well, now, I remember that one of the concerns last year was the teachers got to use it for five weeks and had to make a determination on what's best for their kids on a five-week trial. It was like, that's like.
And we knew that going in.
Well, no, I'm not saying anything bad about it, but it just, that was one of the short flaws, shortfalls of that one. So this one takes care of the, one of those concerns.
Yeah, we had hoped that something would just rise to the surface and be like, this is it.
Right.
And we didn't have the time for that to happen. Looking at screening and professional development, so do we have the right tool? And then the purchase and launch, and again, that's connected with professional development as all, as well. I should mention that the grant for this remainder, remainder of this year, it's a, it's a funny band from March to August. We have been awarded $72,000, give or take $500. Year two, the, the first full year, it's a significant amount. And that's because part of it is the purchase. And so that is $400,000. And then in the final year is $200,000, again, to continue that implementation, professional development and that, the ongoing PD. So it is a multi-year grant. It is, provides both the professional support, the financial support. And while this is K5, we've also brought in, the plan is to bring in Jen Perry as the Director of Teaching and Learning for grade six through 12 to participate and kind of follow the, the trajectory so that we can be doing maybe a staggered approach to how do we review and look at programming six through 12 in terms of literacy? And I think this sets a great foundation for moving forward and establishing that curriculum review cycle across our content areas. Yes.
The data analysis bullet, two back, I think, yeah.
This one or the systems analysis?
Systems analysis. So I'm, I'm reading where it says the consultant will support the comprehensive analysis of systems, policies and processes contributing to the current state of literacy, teaching and learning. Is there any, is any part of this going to be interviewing families of students with struggling readers?
I'd love to say yes. I don't have the answer to that now because our first webinar is tomorrow.
So you'll find out.
So I should have more information tomorrow. And then we actually have our, Friday, we have a one-on-one meeting just for Barnstable.
I think that's, that's an important question. Because a lot of times, if you're, if you're looking at what people are teaching, what students are learning, what systems and policies are in place, sometimes what's in place on paper isn't what's actually happening. And I don't know that you can, without having input from families of struggling readers, especially if they're actively, active, active families. I don't think you're going to get a great picture on how to fix any gap problems.
Well, a realistic picture.
A realistic, right.
And I, and I would add, you know, so the title of the grant is Literacy Equity. So there is that focus on making this equitable, meeting the needs of our students. And I would also, again, I'm, I'm making some assumptions, but based on the process of the grant writing and the stakeholder group that they wanted involved, there's no doubt in my mind that a key step is going to be to include, you know, all stakeholders, our students, our families.
I think back to when I first came on school committee and when you were not able to make that grant meeting about the reading and helping the students. From my perspective, few of the recommendations that were provided in that report were actually implemented. And so I hope, I hope that giving, given what appears to be the breadth of this grant initiative, I'm really hoping we can get a really good objective handle on how to provide adequate instruction to our students across the board.
Yep, and I, I am confident the way that they've structured this and the level of support and assigning us with a consultant that's going to be with us for this, the life of the grant and setting us up for when they're done. When they walk out, those systems and structures will be in place so that we can sustain that plus continue the professional development.
Where does this consultant come, from where does the consultant?
So Desi is, and I'll learn more about that specifically, but Desi will assign a consultant to each district based on needs. There were four districts that were, that received the grant, or one of four that were awarded the grant. So it's not like there's 20 districts and they've got to get a consultant for each. So it is, they've been doing, I understand that they've been doing some interviewing and identifying consultants.
But Desi assigns the consultant to the district.
Yep.
You're almost there.
So that was the end of the grant one, and then I just have, and I'll make these brief. Any other questions about the grant? Okay.
No.
And thank you all for supporting that. I appreciate it. So my other two items, so I wanted to give a quick update on ASLP, which is the Advanced Studies and Leadership Program. Just a couple numbers. Just a couple numbers around that. I think this came up last meeting, as we were talking about some gateway opportunities. So, the program is held at Mass Maritime Academy, thank you. And it is, it's a residential college-like experience that emphasizes leadership and development, and project-oriented instruction in science, technology, engineering, and math. Students are, students are invited to apply, they're identified, the students who are invited to apply are identified based on their achievement in academics, math, science, ELA, in grade seven and eight. This year, one hundred and seventy-five great students in grade seven and eight were invited. There was an informational meeting that Carrie Morse held for the group, and I said, you know, how many people attended? She said it was standing room only. So, she, it was in the BHS library, the main floor, and the mezzanine packed house. So, lots of interest. They received forty-six applications by the deadline. Barnstable, being the largest district on the Cape, is allowed thirty-two student slots. And so, we have, or I should say, she has, through the application process, identified thirty-two students, recommended them to the collaborative, who we partner with on this. And they, we were also able to recommend eight students for the waiting list. The collaborative does provide some financial aid, financial assistance, and I think I had mentioned this last meeting as well. But we also, Carrie had applied for a COB grant, and so, six students will be provided a full scholarship based on economic need. So, again, as we think about the data with the budget and the increase in our economically disadvantaged and the goals of really building out the gateway program, that in and of itself is also looking at, you know, how we can support students that might otherwise not have access.
That was brought up at the collaborative meeting last Wednesday. And they, the collaborative had a benefactor for that program. And the expected costs, which everywhere the costs are going up, but the expected cost that families would actually have to pay has remained stable because of the benefactors. So, the collaborative is working really hard to try to, to provide resources so that the cost to the students is minimized. So, that, that was brought up about the benefactors.
All right, my last thing, just a quick congratulations to the students involved in Future Problem Solvers. So, Barnstable will be well-represented in the State Bowl competition that is being held on Saturday, March twenty-fifth, at Clark University. Barnstable has seven teams that will be participating, three in the middle division and four in the senior division, along with seven students who will be participating as individuals. And all groups will be tackling the topic of throwaway society. We also have four students who are finalists for the scenario-writing competition that will be taking place. And the, those four students are Sloan Contrino, Lucy Comar, Matthew Brancaccio, Kathleen Ramos. So, best of luck to that group next weekend. And that is all I have.
Excellent. We probably don't have any more questions for her, right? You think we're all, we're good? Yeah, I think we're all set, Kristin. Excellent job, thank you, Kristin. We're now gonna move on to old business, five point one, approve, revised, and renamed policy JK, Student Discipline to Student Conduct. Kathy?
So, there was no feedback after the first read on Policy JK. However, at our policy subcommittee meeting last week, we hit Policy JIC, which is a policy that MASC has on its books that we do not have, and it was titled Student Discipline. So, we reread it, we reread Policy JK and felt that a better title for our existing Policy JK would be Student Conduct, because it really addressed the expected conduct. And then, later on the agenda, I'll speak to Policy JIC, which is a first read that we are hoping will become the actual Student Discipline policy.
Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, can I get a motion?
Move to approve the revised and renamed Policy JK. Currently, Student Discipline, renamed Student Conduct, as presented in tonight's materials.
Having a motion seconded, this voice vote?
Second.
Oh, having a second? Thank you, thank you, I would, missed that one. This is a voice vote, all in favor, single five, or single aye? I oppose nay. I just have it unanimously. Okay, well now...
I say nay.
Oh, nay?
I like the word discipline.
Okay. So, it's three to one, motion passes.
Can I clarify, just?
Yeah, sure.
So, we will have a Student Discipline policy? It's, no, you don't have to change your vote, Joe. I just wanted you to understand that we're not getting rid of, having, we will have a Student Discipline policy that addresses student discipline. This policy primarily discusses student conduct and is more broad.
Okay, moving on to five point two, Advisory Committee on School Culture and Climate Extension. So, I need to start this off before we even have the discussion. So, if you follow our meetings, you know, last month, when we got to this item, I said that I pulled it off the agenda at the last second, actually, at the meeting. So, what happened is, we had a open meeting law violation. Joe sent us an email.
My bad.
Joe sent us all an email, kind of discussing it prior to, right before the meeting. So, I'll be honest with you, I saw the email and was like, okay, this obviously violates the open meeting law. I talked to Jane. Jane was like, Mike, I pull it off for now, and we need to figure out, I'd probably call the Attorney General's Office, because they're the ones who deal with the open meeting law. So, that's what I did. I reached out to the Attorney General's Office. They stated that it was obvious it violated the open meeting law in multiple points. And I said, okay, well, what do I do now? And they said exactly what I'm doing, and they said, bring it up, put it back on the agenda, talk about that there wasn't a violation of the open meeting law, tell the public. And then, that, I have the option of either reading the email now into the minutes, or I can just attach it or give it to Jen, and Jen can add it into the minutes of this meeting, which is what I've chosen to do. So, Jen, I will be sending you an email with that tomorrow morning. So, if anybody wants to read Joe's email to all of us discussing this, they can see it within the minutes of this meeting. Having said that, we're done with that. So, now, we can move on to the conversation of the School Culture and Climate Subcommittee. So, this is, just to remind everybody, this is, been going on for a few months. This is a conversation, we have a School Culture and Climate that Joe and Andre are the vice chairs on. It's been going on for about three years. Every year, for all of our subcommittees or advisory boards, we have to extend them. We choose to either to extend them or not every year. So, this is that every-year mark we're at. So, having said that, I will turn it over to whoever wants to, who wants to start?
Yeah, I'll start off in terms of my, my support for this extension of this subcommittee. You know, based on the gains that we're making, I've noted, one of the things that was established is the, the life of this subcommittee and how the membership has grown and the need, you know, to recognize the growth of the subcommittee over time, the recognition of our primary stakeholder groups, those being the educators in the Barnstable Public School Systems, public school system, excuse me, our parents in the Barnstable Public School System, and of course, our students in, in the Barnstable Public School System. And this subcommittee, I feel, directly addresses the real-time concerns, praise, recommendations, considerations of all of these vital stakeholder groups. And so, you know, this, it's central to myself as an educator and member of this committee, that, you know, there's the slogan that you belong in Barnstable, and it's a good slogan in and of itself, but, you know, you're not going to see the fulfillment of public education. You know, that is graduation, integration into society, the economy, self-actualization as individuals, if you do not feel welcome and, and have a school environment that, that you can thrive in. And so, that's the work that the Culture and Climate Committee has been doing and will continue to do. And therefore, I believe in the extension of said subcommittee.
Yeah, I'll just second what, what Andre said. We have a core group of people that I really enjoy working with. We have discussed, and I think, you know, to extend our group a little bit so we get everyone, we get, make sure we have all schools represented, represented. But we definitely want to continue this for, you know, foreseeable future. And hopefully, with, with the lot that we have right now, and we'll discuss to them, you know, maybe we'll put it on the next, if, next agenda, discuss who else we want to. I don't want the group to get too big, but, you know, a few more people from, at least one from each building would be nice, you know? But yeah, I, I do enjoy our meetings. We try to keep them short and sweet, and it's nice to just kind of hear from educators and kind of what's happening in the, in the district. And it's, and I think it's nice to see our superintendent interact with them, kind of a, I guess, more like a kind of relaxed atmosphere, where it's not, you know, too much pressure. So, I think it's beneficial. Thank you.
Kathy?
How many people are on that committee, Joe? What is, because when I look at the minutes, there seems to be a core group of people who attend, but that, it, it doesn't...
Yeah, people pop in and out. Let me, I can find out that number for you.
Well, I'm just wondering...
Jen's saying there's ten people on the committee.
Ten, ten, okay. So, I went through thinking this was going to be on March first, and I pulled and read all the minutes of the meetings. And when I read through and compared it to the original charge, it, it feels as though the broad charge is impeding the process of coming up with concrete recommendations for the school committee. So, I have that one concern. I have a concern, I think, I think the committee structure works better when we have a subcommittee or an advisory committee that, although having two members, that we have a clear chair so that, not that the second subcommittee member can't step in, but I think the co-chair makes it a little more difficult to keep the structure of what's happening in, what should be happening according to the charge in place. So, I, I have a concern. We, we have a current existing School Culture and Climate Committee with co-chairs. So, I have a problem with co-chairs. So, that's one, one concern. When I read through the minutes, there was a sense, and I, one of the members in the November meeting minutes actually questioned what, what was happening at the meeting and whether it was just a talk with no action. So, that was a little concerning. Four people at the January meeting commented on the vision other than, who aren't Dr. Hearn or school committee members. So, my concern is that although the vision is being worked in and the vision is important, I feel as though a committee of ten is not broad-based enough to come out with a directive for a vision statement. So, as the committee is defined on paper and as the committee moves forward with, if it were to move forward with co-chairs, I'm, I'm not able to support that because I'm concerned about it. So, if the, if, if, I'm not against a School Culture and Climate Committee. I'm not against it in theory. I'm just concerned about how it works in practice. And I know a lot of it is my personality, which is why I volunteered for the policy subcommittee, because it's got a more defined, more focused purpose to it. So, that suits my working style and my personality style a little better. There's, there's a workload, there's a result, there's a recommendation, and the progress can be seen. So, as the, as, I just want to be upfront before we take a vote that as the committee charge is currently written and based on the composition of ten people and based on the fact that we have not really been presented anything as a concrete recommendation, I just can't support extending the committee as it currently exists. All right?
Full disclosure, I haven't read any of your minutes of your subcommittee, just to let you know.
Well, that's, that's public record, so you have the...
I'm just saying, I haven't had, I haven't had time.
That's public record, you can do that.
Yeah, no, I'm just letting you know, so.
That's fine. So, I'm gonna speak. So, I am not in favor of this committee going on. I don't, I haven't seen anything of any, we, I asked, we asked a couple months ago for like, what's happened in the last three years. I don't know of any recommendations, except for the last ones, this last meeting, that have come out of the subcommittee. And another, so my, my, it's just my opinion. My opinion is, I agree with Andre a hundred percent. Culture and climate, I, I agree a thousand percent. What I think should happen is, we tried doing the district-wide one, and I don't think it was successful. So, what I would, what my, and it's not anything that like, I think the school committee should stay out of it, and I think it should go back to the schools. And each school can have a culture and climate, so they're dealing with the problems in their specific school. Because I don't think there is, well, it's not even a person from each school, but even if there was, I don't think somebody at West Villages should be determining what the school, like, what needs to happen for better school culture and climate at BIS. That's for the people at BIS to figure out. So, I am very much, like, my, my solution is, don't do it district-wide. Have each school, if they choose, it's up to them, but have, put it in each school's hands. And let, I, I would suggest having them each have a School Culture and Climate Committee that deals with their school. And if they want to have ten members just from their school, just dealing with their things, they can do whatever they want to do. But I do think it's very important to have School Culture and Climate. I just think it should be at more the local level, being in each school. Because then, they're dealing with problems in their school, and they can talk to the principal, and maybe the principal's on it, and they can figure out the problems for their school. And if they go to the principal, and the principal's like, no, I can't fix that, it has to go to the superintendent, I just think that that's a much better formula for success than having a broad one with each member. And like I said, you have a hundred and fifty people at the high school, but only, say, one member, say, each school gets one member. Because I agree, you can't have thirty people on it. So, each school gets one member, so that one member is representing, but people from West Villages or Senneville are voting on what's best for the high school. And I don't think that makes sense. I think the high school people should be vote, like, deciding what happens in their school. So, I, I give it back to the local level and get the school committee out of it and make it so that the, each individual school can do what they want, with their, to figure out their problems in school culture and climate. That's my... Go ahead.
No, I hear that, Mike. Again, my rejoinder in terms of the, the concerns is, you know, I have no problem establishing a chairman of this committee rather than co-chairs, to your point, Kathy. And then, you know, just to, you know, point of order is that, you know, you had requested, Kathy, and I was, I am sensitive and working on a report and recommendations. And so, but, you know, I had that ready to go last meeting, and then we had, and then so then, it was kind of pushed forward to this meeting. And so, you know, that, it, the, the structure that you are seeking, to be clear for me, is something that I am strongly in favor of and have no problem producing a report and recommendations every time that we meet to bring, if, if that's what is... to bring, if that's what is, you know, if that's what, you know, the fellow committee members are looking for. I believe, you know, Mike, you know, your point, you know, in terms of, you know, being at the localized level than being, you know, at the, you know, district-wide level, you know, a state model versus a federal model, I can see that. I feel, in the year that I've been on the committee, you know, the subcommittee, excuse me, you know, this idea that we're in Ivory Tower pontificating, and, you know, we leave, we pat ourselves on the back, and then we go back, and there's no actionable, nothing actionably getting done. Again, looking at the minutes, that's something I've spoken to specifically in the meetings that I vehemently oppose. And I make that clear, you know, that the feedback that we are receiving, and I think the last meeting specifically was quite fruitful, you know, is taken into, you know, our thinking. And then, you know, since Sarah's been there as the superintendent, you know, I think it speaks to and that, you know, is items that can be addressed in real-time. And just an example of that, you know, is that Joe mentioned just recently to Kristen, going over that a concern of the staff was the STAR, was the STAR reporting at the elementary level and how the time that it took and how that was possibly infringing upon instructional capacity. That was brought up at our subcommittee meeting, received. And, you know, that information now gets to the superintendent, you know, then it gets to Kristen, and it's something that we can improve upon if possible, you know, in short order. So, I think that's just one example. So, again, I take your concerns and your feedback seriously, and I've, you know, am making strides to incorporate that. So, just to kind of include that in the record. My original contention, you know, about the subcommittee's extension and my support of it remains. But just to kind of add that to the record, the feedback that you've provided, you know, has been internalized, and there are strides being made.
I move to extend the Advisory Committee on Culture and Climate until 3:15, 2024. Do I have a second?
Second, Ed.
I have a motion and second. I'm going to do a roll call vote versus a voice vote. Andre?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Kathy?
No.
Chair, no. So, it's a tie 2-2, so the amendment does not pass. Okay, so, moving on from that.
I move to dis, then what do we, move to dissolve it?
Well, it's automatically dissolving as of May, March 31st. So, if you'd like to make a motion to dissolve it, we can, but if there's no action taken, then it's kind of-
What if I move to dissolve it, and it's a tie, then it's not dissolved?
No, then it just, then there's no action on anything, so it's automatically going to dissolve on the 31st, no matter what.
All right, well, thanks, guys.
Moving on to 6.1, approve Barnstable, West Barnstable makeup day. Sarah?
Thank you. So, we're in a unique situation this year where BWB was the only school to have had to close in the fall. It was October 14th, and there was a power outage. We have a request from the faculty and staff at BWB to make up that day on Friday, April 7th, which is Good Friday, which is not normally a day for us in the district. It is overwhelmingly in favor that people are available and would rather make up the day on April 7th than extend into June 20th, which is a Tuesday, June 19th being a holiday. We have done a lot of outreach to see if this is possible with respect to the various collective bargaining agreements and various unions. We would propose that this be a half-day for students. It would be a full day for our licensed educators. Other personnel work hourly, and so they would work for the half-day for students. It has a small incremental cost to the district that could be covered within the BWB budget items, money that they have. And again, it's kind of a small amount, on the order of $1,500. We'd be able to run transportation on that day. It would be a pretty lean operation, but I myself would be available and on-call to be sort of administrator to support the building if they needed anything. And we talked with the BTA about it. They're in support, in part because this is coming from members. Beth did note that this was on the school committee's agenda. I don't know how she worded it exactly, but noted that it was under consideration and a possibility with families to give them some notice and has not heard any concerns from them. And so, my request is that the school committee approve Barnstable, West Barnstable makeup day for Friday, April 7th, as a half-day for students.
Okay, do we have any questions? No? Can I get a motion?
Move to approve the makeup day for Barnstable, West Barnstable Elementary School on April 7, 2023, as a half-day for students.
Have a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Have a motion seconded, this is a voice vote. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed nay. Ayes have it unanimously. Moving on to 6.2, school choice adoption for the 2023-2024 school year. Oh, so this is me, sorry, I was looking at the motions. So, we have to, well, I guess legally, we don't have to vote on this ever yet because Sarah told me about it. But, so we, I was like, we should probably vote on it. We've always voted, we actually have the option of not being part of school choice. I just wouldn't understand why we wouldn't. But I think it's best to give our kids who live in Barnstable a choice to go where they, where their families think it's best, including, and people coming in. So, but I guess we don't have to technically, well, we don't, not technically, we don't have to vote on this, but I just figured it would be best because we've always kind of done it, so kind of keep doing it. So, I would, is there any questions about doing school choice? I think it's kind of a, I just kind of figured, let's put it on there just so people know that we're still part of it. So, can I get a motion?
Move to affirm the school committee's intention to offer inter-district school choice for the 2023-2024 school year.
Second.
Have a motion seconded, a voice vote, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed nay. Ayes have it unanimously. Moving on to 6.3, new policy JIC student discipline, Kathy.
All right, so, as I mentioned earlier during the policy review subcommittee meeting, what, the way that we review the policies is that MASC, which is contracted to help us, did emerge of our current school policy manual with the MASC school policy manual. And what we do each meeting is take a look to see how our current policy aligns with MASC, whether or not any new directives have come from DESI, and how they impact the policies. We did not have a policy JIC, but MASC did. And as we looked at this, we felt that this MASC student discipline policy, which we slightly revised to tailor it to Barnstable, really outlined the legal requirements for what we are able to do when there's a disciplinary action. And that kind of helped me at least connect the dots to understand the scope of what the school can do. And I think it does address some of the concerns that were brought to our attention a few months ago. And by having this policy, I think it will provide to the public some additional guidance as well as the school. So, this is a first read, as we've been doing. If you have any concerns about that policy, this is a policy that we're pulling out separately for action, not waiting for the entire section to be done because we feel it's important to include it as soon as possible. Again, the policy committee meets next, it's the second Friday of the month at 1:00. That second Friday is April 14th. And any, any concerns you have brought to me by April 14th will be discussed.
Okay, so, reach out to Kathy after reading the policy. If you have any questions there, 6.4, revise and rename policy AC nondiscrimination and harassment to nondiscrimination, including harassment and retaliation. Kathy?
This was actually brought to our attention. It had been previously reviewed and updated separately. It was brought to our attention by the superintendent. When some things were occurring in the district, this policy had been referenced, and she had some specific suggestions. In addition to that, when we looked at it again, the protected classes had been updated since this policy had been revised, and those changes were also made. Those protected classes are listed three times. It looks like there is a lot of revision when the protected classes concern most of them, as is our usual practice. Your comments and suggestions for change will be discussed at the April 14th meeting.
Okay, moving, any questions or any comments about that? None?
That is also a policy that will be taken out, it's separate. It will be voted on for action and immediate implementation at the April meeting.
Moving on to 7.1, FY '24 fee schedule. Sarah?
So, in your packet is the fee schedule for the current year. There's rental fees, athletic fees, and transportation fees, as well as school lunch. There, this is being presented tonight, kind of in the context of the budget to a certain extent, in that there are no proposed changes to fees incorporated into the FY '24 budget. But one consideration that the school committee may wish to make in the future is related to our economically disadvantaged population and whether or not fees make sense long-term going forward. I'm not ready to make a recommendation that there should not be fees in that there are some consequences that could arise for which we would want to plan. For example, with transportation, if there were not to be fees, that could increase ridership, and that could have a ripple effect. And so, we want to, I would want to study that before we made any moves there. Students who are economically disadvantaged, identify, you know, traditionally what we think of as free and reduced lunch would and do automatically get free fees or reduced fees. So, we are kind of taking care of that to a certain extent. But like with lunches, we may want to sort of universally consider fees long-term for our students. So, there's no proposed changes, we're not asking for a vote tonight to the fees compared to FY '23, but they're listed for you in your packet. We did add two sports, two high school athletics, unified track and unified basketball. Given the shortened season and the efforts towards inclusion, I wouldn't recommend fees for those two sports.
How would that be incorporated since we have one category that is high school athletics? Would there be an exception to that, or would it be-
I think it would be by exception, or we could bring this back to you in April with the sports for which we would charge fees explicitly outlined.
Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, I think the fee, my, I can clearly remember my sophomore year after going through double sessions in football, ready to play, and going to my parents and asking for 100 bucks, and they didn't have it at the time, and having to not play football for a season because we didn't qualify, we were just over that threshold of free reduced lunch, but you're like, kind of like, almost get it, you're like, will we get it? No, you know. So, sometimes, you know, there's that, you know, the working poor, the people that don't have a lot of money. So, I mean, I did get a job at the Tannic book seller, and I stacked books for two months, saved off enough money that I could play basketball and baseball. But I remember how it felt, and I remember my coach saying, no, we've got the jersey here if you, you know, when you're ready. And I just remember just feeling like that, like that shame that you kind of carry with you when you're the kid that doesn't have, you know. So, yeah, fees are, can drive people away from activities they love, you know. So, I'm glad they're considering that.
Yeah, Joe, just adding on to that. I was fortunate to work at the Barnstable Youth Basketball Tournament over last weekend, which was wonderful. Number of teams from across the region participated, full gyms. And Barnstable Youth Basketball did an outstanding job putting on the tournament. But, you know, one thing that was brought to my attention is, and something for the committee to consider, is in terms of the rental fees for some of our athletic organizations in the town that service a notable portion of our student population. And us taking a look at some of those rental fees and making sure that it incentivizes the good work that these organizations, you know, basketball might, may just be one example. But the percentage of the students in the town of Barnstable that are playing Barnstable Youth Basketball and using the gym, you know, one of the administrators, you know, noted, you know, obviously, you know, Mike, you have four kids, you know, you don't make any money doing this. You know, all of the costs to the participants is just to, you know, take care of the gym fees, you know, and, you know, to go on to certain tournaments. And so, that was brought up, and I think we'll consider and discuss that, you know, for some of our town organizations, you know, basketball, some of the other sports, you know, a majority of the participants are, you know-
Our kids.
Our kids, you know. So, looking at some of those fees to make sure that, you know, we are, again, incentivizing the good work that they're doing to put on a number of great events.
I know, because I remember you and I were talking about how you ref date games, which is insane. But with that, did you, no, I'm sorry, and I'm sure you said it. That was, who was, who, who was that? Was that a private organ, like, was it like, is that the rec, that's not the rec? That wasn't the rec?
No, Barnstable Youth Basketball.
Okay, so that's like a private nonprofit type of thing?
Yes.
Okay, okay, that's why I'm asking, just wanted to make sure. Because don't we-
We have a different nonprofit.
We have a different, but don't we also for the rec, for the rec?
I'm not sure-
Because I know they use like gyms and stuff, I mean, we kind of are in coordination with them, as we should be, I mean, but-
Yeah, it's all delineated on the facilities website, not the top of my head. I don't remember exactly where the rec falls, but-
But nonprofits are, like, we pay, like, it's, there's a whole sliding scale type of thing for what we pay, what we charge, what organization? Okay. Okay, but yeah, we'll take a look at it, that's what, that's what the discussion is. Okay, any other discussion? No? Moving on to 7.2, approve accounts payable warrant FY '23, warrant 37. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve accounts payable warrant FY '23, warrant number 37.
Can I just get the amount? Do you have that, do you have the motion, if you look on the motion sheet?
Yes. Excuse me, in the amount of $438,949.07.
Thank you.
Second.
Have a motion seconded, a voice vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed.
Nay.
Nay, oh, I didn't get there yet. Nay. Three to one, motion passes. Okay, we're now going to move on to 8.1, executive session. So, I'm going to make this motion to move to go into executive session, not to reconvene an open session or approve the school committee executive session minutes for February 1st, 2023, and March 1st, 2023, to conduct a strategy session in the preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and/or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, more or bunchu, and to discuss strategies with respect to litigation. Can I get a second?
Second.
Have a motion seconded, this is a roll call vote. Andre?
Yes.
Joe?
Yep.
Kathy?
Yes.
Chair, yes, passes unanimously. That will conclude the public part of our school committee meeting. Everybody have a good, safe night.